Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll find your seats, we're gonna go ahead and get started. If there's anybody that's having a problem finding a seat, we do have our overflow room on the other side of the lobby that's available. There is a monitor in there, so you'll be able to watch the proceedings. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Yes. Councilmembers Haynes?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Reboi?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the flag salute. I'd like to ask everyone to keep in mind that one of our planning commissioners, Mark Yates, lost his father over the weekend. He had previously served as the Chief of Police in Lodi. So please keep their family in your prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liz, would you please read our video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast, Sure West, and Strategic Technologies Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sactmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address councils should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Any items that would like to be pulled off the consent calendar from council?
Yeah, I'd like to pull D4 and 5.
If I could pull D7, please.
Now, Vice Mayor Haynes, you pulled two of the foreclosure districts. Did you want to pull the other one as well? Item number 3?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that's items 3, 4, 5 for Vice Mayor Haynes, and item 7 under Barbara. I believe we had one speaker that wanted to pull an item, but I think that's the item that you pulled, Barbara?
She pulled 7.
D7.
Okay, public comment.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Before we move to public comment, would it be appropriate to report out from closed session?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this evening, closed session, we had conference with labor negotiator, and there was no reportable action on that item. We also had conference with real property negotiator, and there was no reportable action on that item as well. And the council did not get to item C2, Conference with Legal Counsel, which will be handled at the end of the meeting.
And we will do another report on that closed session after that's completed.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, everybody. Al Baldwin, the concerned citizen of Galt, and it's a city of character. And I'm telling you, we're even gonna have 30 days from now, a Galt Diversity Fair. And you may see these around town. There's a lot of flyers out, and it's gonna be wonderful. It's over at the Galt Community Park at Corrillian and Walnut. You can discover the many community resources and opportunities to participate in community organizations, groups, and even events. And there's gonna be food and fun for the kids and the adults too. So come on down and enjoy it. It's on Saturday, September 6th, approximately one month from today, and it's from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. So, Community Park in Galt, come on down. And also, I was thinking about while I was sitting down, I wouldn't even say anything, and I said, "Yes, I better, if I say this, I should..." Today is National Night Out. And normally, each year, the council has made another day for their meetings, but apparently, this must be really important, because I see it's packed. But I didn't even get an invitation until this morning, and that was through email, and that was at Greer. So I hope there is a lot of things going on. I know you can't go to any of them, because you're here. But in the past, we've always had something at the parks, and something big, and something good, and the police were involved, and fire engines, and it was a lot of fun. I hope next year that maybe you can rearrange your schedule some way, so that maybe you can get involved with this, because I think it's a great cause, and it's something that has started a few years back, and I think it's something we should pursue even more so. Now, the second thing I have, and I'd like to propose, we have an Olympian in Galt, and her name is Stephanie Brown-Trafton. She's only 28 years old, but she's in the Olympics, and it hit the B in the sports section. It's a great, big, beautiful picture of her. And what is Galt doing about having an Olympian in Galt? I would suggest that you have some type of a day dedicated to her, or some proclamation that you can come up with, and if you can do that even before she performs, which is very hard to do, I think, right now, because it's coming up very quick. But even while she's over there, I think it would stimulate her and get her to do even better. If there was some kind of a proclamation or something that the council could come up with, that we could present to her, even while she's over there some way, I think it would just boost her excitement and adrenaline and do even better. She might get a gold out of this thing, and I'm thinking she will, but this would almost make it positively sure. And I don't know what else to say about it. That's my feelings on it, and I have some other thoughts, but they're too negative, and I'm not gonna bring them up tonight. So I figured I'd be positive tonight, because there may be some other things that are pretty negative out there. So you're doing a good job so far.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Shannon Bramwell?
Well, she's coming up. Al, I might mention, I was gonna report under my comments, we had talked about if we could do something, and I met with both the school districts, and her event will be at 4:00 in the morning, unfortunately, so it wasn't gonna work out where we could do. But your suggestion, I think, might be great. And as opposed to a formal thing, since it's not agendized, I was gonna suggest all the council can certainly sign a letter of good wishes and get that to her. But we had hoped, we had hoped to actually put together a gathering where we could all, you know, get some big screen TVs and watch the live event, but probably not gonna get too many folks out at 4:00 a.m. to do it. So, and the schools are out right now, many of them, and so this was gonna be hard. But thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Shannon Bramwell, and I am a concerned citizen of Galt. And to be honest, I am astonished at the utter lack of professionalism on the part of Mayor Meredith and Councilwoman Haynes. The letters that they wrote in response to their recall notices are appalling. Just a few comments typed onto a piece of paper, then photocopied with only their Galt, City of Galt business cards at the bottom of the page. No letterhead, no actual letter, just a few comments. Mr. Meredith claims that the recall is a sham, that it will cost the taxpayers $80,000 to have this recall. That's not a whole lot compared to what the lawsuits currently filed against the city will cost us. No one has lied about the financial condition of the city. If you have nothing to hide, then please make an honest and full accounting of the financial status of Galt. Just the facts. Where is the money that was earmarked for specific projects? Where was all the money spent? How much money is really left in the city accounts? Where is it supposed to be spent? As for the campaign promises of Mr. Meredith, I'll let them speak for themselves. The green belt between Galt and outgrowth hasn't happened. Responsible growth hasn't happened. We currently have no growth. That means no businesses, no jobs, no new homes. We do have a lot of foreclosures and a lot of jobs leaving the area. How is that good for Galt? Mr. Haynes claims that the whole purpose of the citizens to protect Galt's future is to see the Delta Greens project reinstated into the general plan. Keep in mind that it was removed from the general plan against the wishes of the voters in the first place. If Mr. Haynes had spoken with anyone from that group, he would know that they have a whole lot of concerns, not just that one. But since he brought that one up, that project would bring millions of dollars into the city's accounts. It would employ many local people in the construction phases. And by bringing the Sacramento County Regional Sewer into Galt, paid for by the Delta Greens project, it would eliminate the need for an aging, expensive-to-maintain wastewater facility. In other words, it would make the sewage plant go away and lower the fees that the city would be charging the taxpayers each month. I see no dispersions being cast by this PAC. They are not the ones who are dropping poorly-written letters on the doormats of the citizens of this city. I don't see them calling names or making nasty comments about others, nor have, they have been honest and open about who they are, where they stand, and what they expect, nor have they done anything to cause costly lawsuits to be filed against the city. In the words of Mr. Haynes himself, "If someone has to lie and exaggerate the truth to get the public support, they must have ulterior motives."
John Slaughterback?
While Mr. Slaughterback's walking up, just a quick point of clarification. The letter that Mrs. Bramwell was referring to was not a letter. It was the official recall response filed by myself and Councilmember Haynes. That response was officially served to nearly everyone that was on the original petition list. And the lies and things that Mrs. Bramwell talks about that have been referred to in the newspapers, they were abundantly clear when we walked to the majority of the houses that had residents that signed the petition. Lies like, "The Delta Greens project is a couple of hundred houses, not 2,700." Lies like, "Mayor Meredith ran on a platform of being an Iraq War veteran, but he doesn't support the war in Iraq, so he's a traitor." Things like that. Those are the things that came up from residents that signed this recall petition. So Mrs. Bramwell can paint as gloomy of a picture as she wants to, but the fact of the matter is, there is construction going on in the city. Those of you that live on the Twin Cities corridor know that, because you drive by it every day. So maybe Mrs. Bramwell needs to drive in her car, up Highway 99, exit Twin Cities Road, and look at all the construction.
John Slaughterback, I live in the city of Galt, and I'm glad you responded to something. I think there's too many times there's not a response out of council when there should be. I'd like to address council and the citizens of Galt. I'll guarantee you $100 sewer bills if you build out at the wastewater treatment plant. We've been hearing about this for 14 years. This has been going on. And there's nobody gonna pay for that sewer plant. If you go out there and build, it's gonna put the sewer plant in position that it's gonna increase sewer rates, and I'll guarantee you'll have $100 sewer rates. West Jost, the company that we employ to do a lot of engineering work for us, stated in their proposal here that they moved the City of Atwater Sewer Plant five miles out of the city, so they wouldn't be boxed in with development. We wanna go out there and box the development all around this sewer plant. That's not any realistic, anybody's ain't realistic at all with no better than box the sewer plant in. West Jost, like I said, moved it five miles. West Jost also stated in this report, irrespective of what kind of upgrades we do at the wastewater treatment plant, no matter what we do, we're gonna need more land for reclamation. We pay a million dollars a year to hire our bio-solids off, and right now, they're putting it on the ground. But this here is gonna stop, we're gonna be boxed in, they're gonna be hauling it off. And West Jost stated, like I said, that we need land. We're even gonna lose the church property, because that lease is gonna expire. So we're not gonna have any land, so things don't look very good, and we wanna go out there and make things look worse. And, like I said, we'll lose the church property to be 2011. We won't even, that's 160 acres we're gonna lose. And the million dollars for a bio-solids off hauling about, but we're talking about upgrading and trying to make Class B, but I don't know what we're gonna do with Class B, because then we still gotta try to get rid of Class B. Staff hasn't endorsed this project about going out and developing around the sewer plant. They haven't endorsed nothing about developing out there. Developers on the east side of the city, you don't see any of them in here endorsing this. They know that if you go out there and build, it's gonna increase sewer rates. Sewer rates will affect their homes, their price, what they're gonna, it'll affect them. It'll impact their development. They're not gonna come in here and endorse this development. Developer sewer impact fees, if they build out here, the impact fees are insufficient to mitigate the impact it has to this sewer plant. It won't do it. It's not enough, what the impact will cover, it won't cover it. Why spend the city's resources for environmental reviews and preparations to take this to Laffco? Why go through that and have it rejected? It'll be rejected. There'll be a group of people there talking against it, speaking up against it. It'll be rejected, so why spend all this money? This financial resources that we're, that we could use for the city upgrade, for different things for the city, roads and so on, and it just doesn't make sense. A word to the wise, if it sounds too good to be true, then it probably isn't true. Going out there and building out the wastewater plant, it sounds too good to be true, it isn't true. Be careful what you ask for, because you may get what you don't want. And what do you know, I'm gonna, colleague puts it that, and thank you very much. I hope this city listens a little bit. One other thing, though, I do have a little time left, I almost forgot to mention it. Corrillio, another engineering firm, stated how many problems we had because of developer impacts trying to build out here. They state in this report of the impact that this, this ground is causing this city because of development pressures trying to build out there. We go out there and build, and you can better believe your sewer rates will go up. And I'm not saying it won't go up now, because developers have been giving this situation a bad deal for 14 years. So I don't know whether it'll ever build or whether or not.
Thank you, Tracy Gross.
Hi, Tracy Gross. I live in the city. Two quick issues. First, I want to again remind you guys that the Sacramento Stown Down, where we help the homeless veterans in Sacramento County, is about five weeks away. We have a local Girl Scout troop that's actually gonna collect the shampoo we need for the comfort kits we put together. But we're still in desperate need of men's clothes, larger-sized men's clothes. We tend to not have anything to give those guys, and it's really hard to turn them away with nothing. So I'll pick up, if anybody's got anything they wanna donate, just let me know. My second issue I'm gonna read. "I think it's time that we stop pretending that Guthridge has been prevented from building on his property, a senior development on his property, only since Haynes and Meredith have taken office. Anyone who's been paying attention knows that this project, no matter what you call it, has been turned down for about 14 years. I think it's interesting that some of you people put the blame on these two. I don't know what Vice Mayor Haynes was doing 14 years ago, but I know Andrew was still in school. I encourage the citizens of Galt to do their homework. Look at the history of this project under all the names that have been used, and see that there are other reasons why this project cannot go through on this property. Even though this PAC behind the recall effort wants everyone to believe that Haynes and Meredith have all the control over whether or not this project is built, most of us know that there are other reasons. If there weren't other reasons, this project would have been out there, it would have already been built. But it hasn't been. 14 years, and it hasn't been. So there's something besides Haynes and Meredith that are preventing that project from going through. A recall, because someone didn't get their way two years ago, is a total waste of time and much-needed city resources. I encourage the city and everyone in it to say no to the recall effort. Vice Mayor Haynes and Mayor Meredith, a majority of the citizens of Galt applaud your efforts to stand by your sensible growth platforms. That's why we elected you. Thank you."
Sandra Marriott Brecht?
Hi, Sandy Marriott Brecht. I live in the city of Galt. I'm very happy to. I've lived in the county for many years, but moved into the city a few years ago. Can I let you... My problem is very minute. I realize with everything going on in the, what's going on in the world. So, thank you for giving me the time to bring up my fencing issue. We just bought a house in a revitalization part of town on Sixth Street. It is spelled out S-I-H-S-E-H instead of the sixth on the front. There, I've been told that we cannot increase the height of the fence there in our backyard, and as you can see from the picture, it doesn't look good at all. It's like a half fence put there. And we'd just like to bring it up three feet, so it's like five and a half or six feet tall, like a lot of the other fences in the neighborhood, of which there are pictures of on the other pages. It's already 12 feet there from the street to the fence. There is no sidewalk right there, but in front there is, and it doesn't take up 12 feet. And we're trying to make it look wonderful, you guys. We're just, we really want the house to dazzle, and it's a third acre lot down there, and it is going to. But if we have to place our fence 10 more feet back in our backyard, it's almost gonna touch the big tree out there and the back of our house. They want us to bring it in, all the way 10 more feet in. So I don't know who to go to. I just thought today, I'm gonna come and ask you, what can I do, where can I go?
Would you be willing to do something like a vegetation to block the view?
Oh, yes. We do plan on doing that as well.
Because I think graffiti would be, you know, one of the biggest concerns with a fence so close to the street, but...
Well, Mayor, I've driven around with spray paint cans in my car a few times, afraid I was gonna get pulled over and find some spray paint back there. In the country, over the years, I've held the spray paint and gone along and sprayed over the graffiti. And I have continued to do it. I know Skookie Kelly tried to get me on the team, but I was just too busy, and I just spray as I go. So if I'm around in town and I see it, I'll just spray over it and go.
Since we're all, I think, trying to encourage infill development and reinvesting in our old town area, I think that there's some type of a sensible ground that we can come to. If, from my standpoint, I think if you would be willing to do some type of vegetation there to prevent the view of the big fence from the street, I wouldn't have a problem with supporting it.
Yeah, Sandy, when we were working with the Boys and Girls Club on that property mirror, we went down and had faced the same kind of issue. Is this a result of what's a front, what's a side, what's a back type of a thing, or what's driving her problem?
I'm not familiar with this particular piece of property, but typically, in the old town area, the right-ofways on the streets are 80 feet wide.
Yeah.
And even when there is a sidewalk, the city actually owns like another eight to 10 feet behind the sidewalk as right-ofway. And under the municipal code, someone cannot build a private fence in, on public property. It's not, it's not their property. So I think that's probably what the, why she was told that she can't put a fence there, that it would have to be moved back.
Now, some of our older lots in town, though, don't have that same easement on them. Is that correct? Because I remember there was an issue with the Galt Cemetery, where we had assumed that there was an easement that went all the way up onto the property pass there fence. In actuality, the recorded documents with the county prove that that wasn't the case.
Yeah, most of it is on the heart of downtown, the numbered and lettered streets, where they're all 80-foot right-ofways.
The Boys and Girls Club will sit right in back of our property there.
Right.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is the property.
Can we, is it within our purview to make a deal with her, so to speak, that she can put her fence up, but if we ever want that use, which I don't think we're ever gonna use, that she'd have to take it back down, and she understood that's her risk? Because we're not, we're not gonna exercise that 80-foot right-ofway at this point in our city's history, I don't think. And she's gonna lose another, what, 10 feet of your...
And it is already 12 feet from the, from the fence that is there, and we just wanna increase the size. We don't want to do anything else. And it looks ridiculous there with all those rusted steel posts in the ground and a three-foot fence on it, so.
I'm gonna make a recommendation. I think what we need to do is, we need planning, we...
I was trying to not interrupt. We've implemented a new process called revocable permit, where situations like this, where we have land that is actually public right-ofway, that we're not gonna be using, we have a permit process, and we've done it twice so far, where we are allowing development or private people to utilize a portion of the public right-ofway. I don't know, particularly, if it was something we could take a look at. Ted may not be aware of the program, but it may be applicable in this case.
No, but we're heading the right way. I would want public works, I want planning, and I want building inspection to sit down and work it out, so that they can communicate among themselves, because two of my departments don't know about this.
Okay. And we're gonna have, is this slated for a new sidewalk in the near term as well? Do you recall? And if you don't, that's fine, but...
Where exactly is it?
A corner of Sixth and D. I don't think it was on this year's sidewalk.
I think it was on...
There's not a sidewalk there currently.
Again, I don't know what the, all, the total aid yet is. It may be, ultimately, it would be a lower priority.
In our, in our out years, but if, you know, if there's a way we can work it out, that she could have an appropriate fence without another loss of her backyard, I just think that'd be great. As long as you understand, as long as you understand some quirky thing happened, we needed it back, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
I don't think so either, since how many years has Galt been here, and there's not a sidewalk there yet. But we'd leave plenty of room and really make it look nice for folks to come and sit underneath a tree if they want to. We do plan on putting trees inside and outside the fence. And if you drive by my real house at 1468, you'll see my yard, my real yard. And we hope this one will look just...
Let my staff meet and make a proposal and see if we can't solve your issue.
Yeah, and I have talked to planning, and I have talked to Chris at, is it planning? Yeah, at planning, so.
Thank you, though, for investing in the old town area.
Thank you. Yeah, it's gonna look nice, you guys. When can I check back at some point and see if it's okay with...
Give us a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And we'll probably call you and maybe have you participate.
All right. Thank you, and thank you all for serving. I think you're all doing a wonderful job, even though I don't agree with you sometimes. You're up there for a reason, you're up there to help Galt, and I think everybody knows that. And if they don't, they need to run for office, because I don't, I see you doing a great job, so thank you.
Thanks.
Dan Jimenez?
Dan Jimenez, and I live here in the city. I'm here tonight in hopes that everyone will join with me in the morning of a passing of a beloved friend of the city. No one knows for sure how old he was, since his birth records were long-lost and bureaucratic red tape. Just about everybody I know sought his counsel from time to time. I'm talking about our good friend, Mr. Common Sense. Mr. Common Sense lived by simple, sound financial policies. For example, don't spend more than you earn. And reliable strategies are always the best, like work on your infrastructure first, then on rooftops, even though some of those rooftops are going to be built around a sewer plant. What would Mr. Common Sense say about this recall? He would tell us to look at the up and the downside of this issue. The upside would be that a small, greedy group would get their way, and don't kid yourselves, they will do and say anything to make sure they got their way, just so they can build homes next to a sewer plant. can build homes next to a sewer plant. Now, the downside of it, he would tell us that the city and the taxpayers will have to pick up the tab of 70, $80,000 or more if this recall goes further. But more importantly, he would ask us to think about this. What happens if this group is allowed to be successful? What will happen the next time they don't like future council members? They'd start yelling, "Throw them out! Let's start another recall." So, what if the city has to put out another 70, $80,000, $90,000 just so we can get our way? Mr. Common Sense must be shaking his head in disappointment and totally embarrassed by this group. Mr. Common Sense never did have much respect for groups who believe in such things like, "I know my rights and I want it now. I am a victim. It's either my way or the highway." In this group's eyes, I am sure that they think that Andrew Meredith, Donald Haynes, ran a dishonest campaign to get elected. They ran on the platform of a promise of pushing reliable growth and to put citizens ahead of special interest groups. Then, once they were elected, they had the gall, these guys had the gall, to live up to their promises. It's terrible. Politicians that live up to their promises should be valued. They are rare. I shudder to think what should happen if one day this special group targets you, you, or me on something that we are doing. We have to send them a clear message that this recall is simply silly, and they cannot bully their way up to the front of the line. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Rick Walters?
My name is Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. Do we want growth beyond our ability to pay for it? No. Do we want a bigger city government? No. Do we want special interest groups dictating the direction of our council through proxy? No. This is precisely why the election of 2006 changed the course of the city and its government forever. We now have two councilmen who put the needs of the citizens before the special interest groups' wants and desires. Thank you, Councilmen Meredith and Haynes, for your service to the community. Special interest groups and/or PACs are formed for one reason and one reason only, that is to make money for their particular cause. These special interest groups and PACs come before this council all the time, asking for money or special consideration. Do they care where or how this city is going to get the money, or what impact their request will have on the city? No. If this city council denies a particular request for money or special consideration, then they are automatically considered to be non-caring individuals with no heart at all. I assure you, this is not the case. Our city council cannot and should not govern by a tug-of-the-heart. This city is not a lending institution or a social distribution center. The city's sole purpose is to provide city services and safety, nothing more, nothing less. Some of these special interest groups are formed to change the direction of city government by whatever means they can. Some revert to PACs with deep pockets to move their agenda along and even go as far as recalling members of council. One such group has made it very clear that they are not happy with the results of the new general plan boundaries. The truth is, all property owners have been considered and evaluated for acceptance into the general plan. This was done by community involvement in the way of two community surveys, four focus group meetings, six community workshops, eight joint city council planning commission study sessions, 22 total city council meetings, and 10 miscellaneous meetings for the development of our general plan boundaries. To that end, the final word was, no property west of our wastewater treatment plant would be part of the new general plan boundary. If you listen carefully to this group's message, it's loud and clear. To hell with all of these meetings and the community input. Their only desire is to build homes on Twin Cities Road next to our wastewater treatment plant. Take it or leave it. The land development plan that our city council has addressed will fall in nicely with LAFCO and SAICOG's planned boundaries for the city of Galt. Once again, this special interest group is not concerned with the findings of these Sacramento agencies and dismiss the agency's findings and our council's plans as absurd and out of touch with the developers' wants and needs. In other words, we have it wrong, and we should only listen to land speculators and developers. This special interest group would have you believe that their PAC has all the answers to Galt's problems. Just listen to the millions and millions in dollars that they have to share with us and the revenue we would, we would lose. My remark to this PAC is, if you don't have it, you can't lose it. It is irresponsible for our council to allow development next to or around our treatment plant, when so many other cities have used this land as buffer lands and lands to mitigate future land development. I would just like to leave, my final statement would be, I like to read a lot, so I read this little caption, and I think it fits really nice here. As far as possible, without surrender, be on good terms with all persons. Speak your truth quietly and clearly, and listen to others, even the dull and ignorant. They too have a story to tell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we move on with the agenda?
Excuse me, I wasn't going to speak, but Mrs. Bramwell's comments made me have to come up here. My name is Jerry Stripling. I've lived in the city of Galt for 62 years. I've watched this town grow. I do expect the council members to back what's going on as far as the new general plan. It's a good plan. We have speculators out there that bought ground around the sewer plant and wish to box it in by putting houses on it, 2,700 homes. That's about 7,000 people. You can't, for the future of Galt, build around your sewer plant and box it in. If this group decides to have a recall and get successful, you're going to watch your town turn in, not your town, my town, all of our town, turn into 70,000 people. You'll be just like Elgro. You'll have the mess they got. They keep wanting to, to upgrade their general plan, go out, now they're out wanting to go all the way to Wilton. They're not happy with what they got. They're greedy. Galt doesn't have to be greedy. If you looked into the LoDai paper, I think they had nine people in there, they asked about the city of Galt, what they liked about the city of Galt. Every single one of them said they loved it because it's a small-town atmosphere. You know, and that's all, we want to keep it. You can't box your sewer plant in, put houses all around it, and expect to turn in to anything less than 70,000 people. We have a mess right now. We can't even get across the freeway. When school starts, you will see a mass mess. You can't get over, you'll, you know, it's, you're going to spend 10, 15 minutes getting into town Galt, because this town was not, never designed right from day one. I watched, this bully doesn't want to send, sell his ground out there to put tertiary water on it, and I don't blame him. He doesn't want to rent it. He's backed out of that, I understand. The church ground can pull their ground out at any time. I've read that contract, believe me. 14 years ago, they tried to put this Del Webb in, they started it while it was Delta Green, and Chong May Dodge and Mike Guthridge are the two that own the property. They bought it as a speculation. A speculation, when you buy something, you're buying it hoping everything will go your way. Well, they're in it just for the money. And I, I've watched, I've watched this thing many a time. I've watched it for 14 years, I've been against it. I said, "You can never build up against your sewer plant. First thing you smell," I don't care where the smell comes, it's automatically a sewer plant, even if it's coming from downwind or upwind, it's going to be the sewer plant. It's just, and I'm not against Mike Guthridge, I like the man, and Chong May Dodge, I don't know her, but the property, or the, they're Delta Green, I'm against that. It's just in the wrong place, is all it is. And I want to commend you guys for stepping up there and going for a slow-growth attitude. I watched them go up in front. Darrell Clare happened to be there at the time, we went to LAFCO. LAFCO listened to us and told Darrell Clare, "You need to go home and listen to your people." Is exactly what was said. And if you guys don't believe it, I'll pull the tape on it, and you guys can see that tape anytime you want. They said, "Delta Green does not belong out there. It's an environmentally sensitive area. It's farm ground. It's ranch ground. Leave it alone." I'm just very upset with what's going on on the recall. I don't think it should ever be done. I better just quit now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I didn't have this on my sheet, but I decided to add it. I want to reserve a little bit of time for later. But my name's Kathleen Amos. I am, I do live in the city. I'm a local businessperson, and I'm also the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. But I'm here tonight as a citizen, and actually, I'm here as the treasurer for the new Measure R Committee, Political Action Committee. This council inherited a host of problems resulting from too much growth too fast in our, in our little village. I'm proud of the job that our, this council has done and the heat you are taking right now. I know it's not easy. But I am here as the treasurer for the Measure R Committee. We are, Measure R, which is, is the anti-drug and anti-gang police improvement measure that will be on the ballot in November, and will add seven more new officers to our streets. Measure R is one way that we hope to make up for this gap in infrastructure that has been left by prior councils who lack the foresight that this council has. And I appreciate that you're taking the leadership in this, and I hope that the citizens of Galt are going to vote yes for Measure R in November, regardless of what happens with the Delta Green group. I really hope the citizens will vote yes for Measure R, because it is one small step towards making up the gap in infrastructure that's been left by so many prior councils. Unfortunately, you know, it's, it's a sad thing for our community that we are left with these problems, but we have to start making the, the whole platform, as I remember it from two years ago, was that we were going to try to slow down, fill in our infrastructure before we move forward, and I think that's what we should be doing. And I appreciate the fact that this council is doing that and that Mayor and Vice Mayor are, I'm sorry that you have to take the heat right now, but I appreciate what you're all doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathleen, before you go, who are you representing?
Pardon?
Who are you representing?
I'm here as the treasurer for the Political Action Committee of the Yes on Measure R.
Okay.
The, the Measure R, which is the anti-gay, anti-drug, police improvement...
No, I know what it is. I just want to be sure who you're representing, because we've been trying to build a five-person coalition to get this passed, and I'm surprised we're attacking council, current or past, in that effort. But apparently, whoever you're working with has given you permission to say the things you just said.
No, I'm speaking...
So, I just want to be sure. No, that's, you're not speaking for you. You made it very clear who you are, that you are the treasurer of that group, and are you sure they've approved what you just said here?
Well, I do think, I think that the infrastructure problem was one that's been discussed on a public level for years here, and the police problem...
I have one question. Did the words you just speak, as the treasurer of that group, was that approved by that group? It's important...
No, I did not get permission to speak about that tonight at this meeting. But it is a fact, as a member of this community for 25 years, it is a fact that we have expanded and expanded and expanded without expanding our police force, which was necessary with the increase in the number of rooftops and the number of citizens. And when I moved here in 1985, there were, Councilman Clare, there were about 5,000 people in this town. And there have been many, 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 many years, and if you don't believe me, talk to Doug Matthews, the former police chief, because I've done it for many times over the years, and he has been telling this, this city for many years that we needed more officers on the streets, and that...
No argument there.
And I've been at city council meetings...
Same chief of police praised the previous councils for hiring more police officers than had ever been done in the history of the city. That's not my point. My point is, you announced yourself as treasurer of an organization, in my opinion, made some comments that aren't going to help any of us get this passed, and I'd just like to know whether you had their support. And you've now said that, no, they didn't approve you to say what you just said, and I think it's unfortunate you did.
Well, I don't think it is, Councilman Clare. I think it's just stating a fact, quite frankly. As I said, even while Doug Matthews said, "Thank you for hiring more officers than you have in the past," he also said, "We do need seven more officers." I'm quite certain that that's been his, his mantra for many years, and he retired out of frustration that that never happened. Thank you very much.
Any other speakers? Before we move on to the consent calendar, I wanted to read a brief statement. I was, I was very disappointed that the advocates of the recall didn't have the courage to serve me my recall papers in person. They chose to send a courier to my home to deliver them. I was hoping that it would be served in a public meeting, so I would have an opportunity to respond, but I'm going to do that right now. Recently, Vice Mayor Donald Haynes and I were served with the notice of the intent to recall us by a developer-backed political action committee called Protecting Galt's Future. While the threat of a recall is certainly a matter that should be taken seriously, this recent development does not come as a surprise. You see, this group, headed by Dick Smith and the Bramwell family, has basically given the city council an ultimatum. Give our millionaire developer friend the green light to build 2,700 homes in the midst of a nationwide housing crisis. Ignore the implications that approving the project would bring to the city. Ignore the risk of litigation involved with deviating outside of regionally-accepted growth boundaries, and if you don't, you're going to pay. When I ran for city council back in 2005, I promised to not let the needs of developers trump the needs of local residents. Approving the Delta Greens project, like the Protecting Galt's, Galt's Future PAC wants the city to do, would be a mistake for this city. I promised the voters of Galt that I would not sell them out to cater to rich developers looking to make a quick buck at Galt's expense. I have fulfilled those promises. Shortly after my election, I supported scaling back our general plan update to a boundary line that recognizes the concerns of the entire region in regards to irresponsible growth. In addition, this council voted to include more retail land use designations in our future growth areas to address the needs and the wants of this community in terms of shopping. The previous general plan boundary proposed by the previous council and supported by the development interests of the Delta Greens project was flawed and overreaching, calling for a build-out population that would nearly triple the size of this city in less than 25 years. I was quite open during my campaign about the fact that I would change those boundaries and population projections if I was elected. To coincide closely with the SAICOG blueprint, I have fulfilled that promise. What this group, led by Dick Smith and his developer friends, want the community to believe is that the sky is falling, and the only way to avoid the impending disaster is to build more houses. I asked the residents living in neighborhoods blighted by foreclosures and abandoned homes to ask themselves one question: What will 2,700 new houses in a bad location do for Galt besides compounding traffic issues on our already struggling Twin Cities overpass? The project will not fund the building of a new interchange. It will only contribute. Likewise, likewise, it will not... Likewise, likewise, it will not lower your utility bills. The leader of the group pushing for a recall, Mr. Smith, has long been a local advocate for irresponsible development and the flawed philosophy that more rooftops is the answer to everything. In the early part of this decade, Dick Smith and his followers attempted to recall former Mayor Tim Raboy. Despite a disgraceful developer-funded campaign of lies and misinformation, they were unsuccessful. I am confident that the voters will see this, see through this charade and recognize what is truly behind this recall effort: Money, money, money. This group is asking Galt voters to spend around seventy-five thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars to more on a special election to make a rich developer even richer. I am proud of my accomplishments on the council, and I stand by my record of protecting this city from irresponsible growth and the problems that it brings. When this group comes to your door or approaches you outside a store, ask them to tell you where their funding is coming from. If your, their goal is truly to be open and honest, they'll tell you. If they don't tell you where their money's coming from, you can draw your own conclusions. That's it.
Okay, I'd like to read my response as well to the recall, but I do want to bring, uh, thank Ms. Brenham for reinforcing what I'd said all along, this is about the Delta Greens project. Each and every time she speaks, she leads to the same project, so, it should be a Claire indicator to anybody listening that that's what this is all about. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to respond to this recent notice of intention to circulate a recall petition I received on me from the Galt City Council. Now, this recall, again, for myself, is no surprise as well. Uh, it's been pretty much common knowledge that, uh, this group has been calling, well, I'm sorry, it's been pretty, uh, it's been common knowledge since this group calling themselves Citizens for a Better Galt, um, formed themselves as a political action committee, and stating that their goal is to restore the Delta Greens, actually, it's, I apologize, it's Citizens, Protecting Galt's Future, I believe it is, I'm, excuse me. In addition to that, they've stated that their goal is to restore the Delta Greens project into the general plan. Now, there will be no satisfying these individuals, and they will lie, cheat, and deceive the public in an attempt to sway them into believing their cause is justified. If someone has, Ms. Shannon, as Shannon had indicated, I have said that if someone has to lie and exaggerate the truth to get the public support, they do have alternative motives. And in this case, their motive is to push the Delta Greens project on this community, regardless of what the best, what is best for our community. Many of those involved in this recall, such as Dick Smith, are the very same individuals who have been involved in similar attempts to recall other council members in the past, and have influenced the outcome of ballot measures, such as Measure R. These individuals know that negative politics works, and they will attempt to achieve their goals by casting dispersions on myself as well as other members of this council in order to create confusion and discontent among the citizens of our community. I have no doubt that the voters of our community who elected me know or will soon know the real motives behind this recall. This recall is and will be financed by out-of-town developers whose goals are to discredit myself, as well as the others to take control of this council and the city's future. These individuals will try to convince our citizens that although I've only been on this council not much more than a year and a half, that I am personally responsible for all the city's problems. I find it sad that these individuals have chosen to make a mockery of this council and our community for their own personal benefits. I've always said that if you want to find the source of the problem, just follow the money. If you want to truly send a strong message to these individuals, that you have no intention of tolerating such cheap political games, simply just let them know, if they knock on your door, if they try to get your attention to support this, let them know how you feel. As for myself, I will continue to, to represent and vote for the best interest of all citizens of our community, and I will not allow outside influence from those who come here pushing their personal agendas at the cost of the rest of us. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the consent calendar. We have item three, four, and five that were pulled by Vice Mayor Haynes. I think you wanted just general discussion about all three items.
Yes, please. I pulled this one before, and I, I believe it was last time we voted on it. One of the issues that I had was, is the idea of foreclosing on PAC taxes. And I'm a little concerned, as I was this time, but even more so is that if we're going to push the issue of foreclosure on somebody who owes, say, a few hundred dollars of taxes, that's one of my biggest concerns.
You need to remember, though, that these are to-pay bonds that were floated that had to be paid, and if you don't go back to collect the money, and there's not enough reserves, then the city has to pay that.
I understand, but, I mean, how many people do we find that actually get in a position, especially in this time, where they may not be able to pay, that you might force them into foreclosure?
Well, but what foreclosure does is it puts a lien so that you will get the money so that you can pay the bond. If you don't go after it, you may never get it.
Isn't it possible just simply to put a lien on the property without having to go through the foreclosure process?
I'll, I'll defer to Inez, but I, I don't know of another way to do it.
There actually, there actually is, is this on? There actually is a lien in place already on the property, but what this does is, under certain districts, it does provide us the ability to start the foreclosure process because there are covenants that we put out there when we sold the bonds that said, if it meets certain criteria, then we have to start those foreclosure processes because the bondholders have an investment on these bonds themselves. Now, I think on one of the districts, it hasn't met the critical criteria, so we don't necessarily have to, we're not required by the bond covenants, but in this time, in this economy, we have thought that we are trying to protect the city as well as the bondholders as well, so, Michelle actually has more information on the districts themselves, so if you want to write a little bit more information on the process.
Um, yes, two of the districts, the CFD eighty-eight dash one and the eighty-eight dash two district, the city is required with our bond covenants to proceed with foreclosure. The ninety-nine dash one district, um, it has two criteria. One is that if the delinquency ratio is higher than five percent, and the second is if the, if the reserve fund is not intact. Well, the delinquency ratio is higher than five percent, it's over eight percent, actually. We do still have an intact reserve fund, so we are not required. However, we are, staff is recommending that we do proceed with foreclosure so that we do not have to tap into that reserve fund or not be able to make our payments to the bondholders.
Just a quick question on District one-nine-eight-eight dash one. The first property that's listed, which is parcel number one-five-zero-zero-three-zero dash zero-one-two, what is that location? I'm assuming it's a retail spot, is that correct?
I'm sorry, um, most of the districts in eighty-eight dash one are all part of the northeast area, I'm not sure specifically on-
The reason that I was saying it was probably a bigger portion of land was just the, the amount that's listed.
Actually, that property's been delinquent for several years.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure what the zoning is on it, but-
And the other property that's delinquent is actually the proposed Walmart location, which I find disgraceful, that that's fallen into foreclosure. So I'm hoping that, um, we can mediate that before it gets to that, that point, but-
Is this the actual location off of Twin Cities Road that Walmart is not paying? Or is it another location?
I'm not sure of the location of the parcel.
It is actually in the northeast area, but the actual site is addressed, I, I didn't bring with me this evening.
I didn't know that they owned any portions of property other than that one here in the city.
Mr. Guthridge, is this your old property, oh-five-eight?
It's one-four-eight dash zero-zero-seven-four dash zero-five-eight. Doesn't tell us here on our staff report. Eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Really?
I was wondering, the last time this came up, there were some questions as to how we had notified people, if we got a, uh, something that showed they had actually received the information. Did we do that this time?
Actually, at this point, our attorney has not sent letters out. Right now, the county is still handling the collections. What we're doing tonight is taking those levies back and proceeding with collections on our own, but we did discuss that with our attorney, and he is going to go ahead and send out all of our notices, both certified and regular mail, so that we can ensure that, that the letters get there.
Thank you for asking that, Barbara.
Because I remember last time, yeah, we did have, um, homeowner that had come to the meeting and said he hadn't been notified properly. And at this point, have these people been notified at all, or is that something to come? Because we don't, as far as I can tell, there's no one here in the audience that is protesting this or has any comments on these foreclosures.
Well, these levies are collected with their property tax bills, so they would have received a property tax bill last fall that would have had this levy included. You know, that would have been done or due in December and April, and the county does go through its delinquency notification processes, so that's what they would have received up to now.
Okay. There's no separate, um, notification process that the city of Galt undertakes, it's actually held by the county. What this process does is initiates, taking it away from the county now because they'll stop their process, and comes back to the city, and then we'll start the foreclosure process. Under two of the districts, as Michelle noted, was, we are required by the bond covenants to start the foreclosure process. On eighty-eight dash two, there are three parcels in it, and on the CFD, those parcels that are in over five thousand, again, we're not starting, um, the foreclosure process on all parcels within that district, only those that are five thousand dollars or higher. So if you are delinquent and your levy by three hundred dollars, you are not, we're not starting the foreclosure process on those parcels. We are starting on just those parcels that owe an amount over five thousand dollars.
So that's residential as well as commercial?
Residential and commercial, however, whatever the zoning is.
And we only have, what, maybe one property is residential that's into that, that has, that meets that criteria?
Um, under the Community Facilities District, both of those, uh, I'm not sure if the zoning are, but it clearly is not one homeowner, based on it being over, over five thousand dollars.
Well, I'm sorry, so you're talking about collectively over five thousand for all of them? For all the, whoa, whoa, whoa?
One, one, one parcel-
One parcel, that's what I thought.
-that's owed five thousand dollars. There is no single-family dwelling unit that would owe five thousand dollars in this district.
Okay. And the other districts?
Um, so on eighty-eight dash two, um, if we can go from the beginning, nineteen ninety-nine dash one, we are recommending foreclosure processes on all of them, however, if council would like to discuss maybe a different approach because we are not required to initiate foreclosure processes. Those levies range in value or delinquency, um, there's a total of-
Twenty-nine-eight-eight-eight fifty-eight.
Twenty-six parcels, and the lowest amount is two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars to a high of eleven thousand, seven sixty-six. It's staff's recommendation that we initiate foreclosure process on all of them, however, there are several parcels that are less than a thousand, so, um, if council feels that we would like to work with some of these property owners a little bit more, possibly those less than a thousand dollars, we are not required to, based on bond covenant, so we can look at something, and council could entertain some discussion on those amounts.
The reason why I, I think that that would be a good idea personally, I think everybody knows the president just signed new legislation that gives cities avenues to rescue homes that are falling into foreclosure, and we could get a, we could get an in-depth overview of what that program's all about, what type of funds it'll bring to the city, and whether some of these homes would qualify for that, because really, the goal of us sitting up here is not to vacate homes in the city. We want to promote homeownership and encourage residents to keep their homes, so if the president's new legislation provides us an avenue to do that, I think we should explore it before we, we move forward.
And I agree, and, yeah, a lot of these people are probably the at-risk individuals that, that this program is gonna be targeting, so I, I think it would be in the best interest of them and us if we were to give them an opportunity.
Glancing at some of the properties that are in foreclosure, there's obviously some that would not qualify. Uh, I believe there's about ten properties that are listed under the same homeowner. Those would obviously not qualify for the president's new bill, but there are others that, that look like they would, so.
Yeah, we would, we would, um, we could definitely work under the premise that if it's one single-family dwelling unit owner, that we would not initiate foreclosure, but if you do have a owner that owns ten parcels, that we would still initiate the process.
That would be reasonable. My biggest-
And if it's over a thousand independent.
My biggest concern is I don't want to be forcing, or pushing the issue of foreclosure on somebody who's struggling in their home, and this could be a tipping point to where they just throw their hands up, and, uh, I'd like to see them get an opportunity with the president's new program to get out there, maybe get restructured, and get themselves back on track.
Again, the bond covenants do not require that, so we can certainly work under the guidelines that council, if council agrees to that, we can certainly implement that process on one district.
Now, are we gonna verify that there's people still living in these homes? Because if they're empty and they've already been vacant, why are we doing anything for them?
Well, you don't know that they're empty, but I would think, think, I don't think that it's unreasonable to verify that they're, they're still living there, and if they're not, well, obviously, you would want to proceed.
Well, we, if, if, if no one's living there, we want to protect the city's interests, so we would have to verify that.
Well, there's a lien on the property, so if nobody's living there, it's gonna go up for sale, we're gonna get our taxes. I don't know that we'd want to go through the foreclosure process. Would we? What would be our procedures? If it's, if it's empty, you've got a lien in place, uh, the cost of a foreclosure would be pretty expensive at that point. Would we really want to proceed?
Well, we would, just because we wanted to maintain the process. If, if someone is delinquent on a regular property tax, you wait five years for the delinquency before you start foreclosure, because this process has the bond covenants, you actually start that process earlier. So in the event that if it was vacant, or, um, you could start that process of selling that property and recovering our monies in a faster time period. So we would want to start that process.
Would you, would you look at each property, looking at the value of the property and what's owed on it, et cetera? Any other liens?
Up to now, no. Our process is basically collect the amount that is delinquent and start the foreclosure process, um, just out to protect the city and the reserve funds for the bondholders.
To alleviate councilmen's voice concerns, though, I'd be willing to go out, I think I was counting, there's less than fifteen that would actually, that looked like they would qualify for any financial assistance. I'll go out and I'll take pictures of the ones that are listed here, and I'll bring it back at the next meeting.
I think staff can do it, you don't have to do it.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
You need to be a little careful, you need to remember that if the reserve goes and there's no money, somebody's gotta pay this, and the citizens of Galt shouldn't have to end up doing that. In this particular, uh, district, there's one individual that owns over fourteen parcels. So there's, there's, you need to be very careful, it's not necessarily single-family homeowners that you're dealing with.
I think we've addressed that, the direction that we've given.
The concern, the concern is about those who actually own and live in their homes, not somebody who has a, a block of homes. Steve, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr., I'm sorry, Council, I just want to emphasize the importance of the covenants that Inez brought out. When the city issued the bond, those covenants imposed on the city a fiduciary duty, and to the extent that the city does not follow through with that fiduciary duty, and you establish that track record, it will affect your bond rating for any future, uh, bond issue, issuances that the city wants to undertake. So there are, there are certainly several interests that, uh, it's important to protect in this type of proceeding.
So are you recommending that we move forward with the recommendation from staff and not start changing something in the middle here like we're trying to do?
For those items where the debt ratio has been exceeded as identified in staff's report, it would be my recommendation that you proceed with the foreclosure process as you're required to do by the, uh, the bond covenants.
What's, what alternative do we have when you say that it would affect our, our bond rating?
Inez, just for a second, can you clarify that the parcels that we're talking about, that, that district does not fall into the requirements?
My understanding is that we were only discussing the possibility on Assessment District nineteen ninety-nine dash one.
Right.
Under Districts nineteen eighty-eight dash two and the CFD nineteen eighty-eight dash one, the bond covenants, um, require us to initiate foreclosure process, so it was my understanding, we were not discussing those two districts, just the first district. Um, and how it would affect us is if, in fact, we are not adhering to the bond covenants, if we were to go out in the market soon, which we are actually evaluating, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, or any other issue, they would look at our history when we're actually looking for a bond rating or insurance, and look in fact if we are adhering to the bond covenants that have been placed on the city of Galt, and if we're not adhering to them, then there would be, um, big concern on issuing insurance or any type of rating for the city of Galt. So I agree with the city attorney, I think that there would be some room under Assessment District nineteen ninety-nine dash one, we are not required, so I think that gives us a little bit more, uh, leeway and discretion for council action.
Okay.
Just to clarify one other thing, uh, Mr. Guthridge, we weren't asking him about the Walmart property because it's tied to him in any bit in regards to, uh, the behind property taxes, Mr. Guthridge has always paid his property taxes on time. I saw him out there grinding his teeth and looking at me, so. Any further comments by council? Move forward with the three items.
Move forward and approve as staff recommended.
Well, we can go through the first two, nineteen eighty-eights and-
Ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine. Nineteen eighty-eight one and nineteen eighty-eight two.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the foreclosure proceedings on those first two, item number four, oh, wait, three and four.
We have the discretion.
We have to do that separately, three and four?
But, what I'm saying is, the others. And I'll second that motion. Oh, okay. Call for the vote? Aye.
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 Prove five-zero. And in regards to Assessment District 99-1, any further comments by council?
All right, now, this is the one we're talking about, where we would have some discretion, Inez, without affecting our bond?
The bond covenants do not require that we initiate foreclosure-
So it wouldn't affect the bond rating?
Um, that's discretionary, but we're not in violation of the bond covenant.
Well, a question for our attorney. Based on the reading of item number five, do you agree that we have any discretion on number five?
If, if the, uh, if the debt ratio has not been exceeded as reported by Inez, then you do have discretion.
Okay, a question for our city treasurer. Should we be doing anything that, other than moving forward with this? Do you think it will affect any kind of bonds that you deal with in your position in the future?
You know, this is a tough situation. And my personal feeling, and although it's difficult, it's a difficult decision for you to make, I really believe that we should proceed with these foreclosure proceedings. And because the, the, you, what you're talking about is making an exception, we're trying to work out a deal with $1,000 or less. When you look at the future and what it could possibly, the ramifications of that, I, I think that we're talking more than just a few thousand dollars here. Because if you have a rating, a bond rating of, like, say, A as opposed to A minus, that's a, that's a difference in interest rates. And over the long term, it will affect the city, and that means we would have to pay more. So that's, that's my opinion.
With us not meeting that percentage, is it going to affect our bond rating? We're not, we're not deviating-
I cannot, I cannot tell you whether yes it will or no it won't.
Inez, any comments?
Well, whenever we go out to the market, we actually make a presentation. We look at existing bonds that the city has issued, and they'll look at some of our delinquencies on assessment districts, and, and our success in collecting. So, again, it's discretionary. It's up to them when we go out and make a presentation on behalf of the City of Galt. And it just depends on the rating agencies, um, how they want to evaluate us. It's, again, we are not in violation of the bond covenants, but a lot of information is how we present the city, and, and, um, you know, some may say that we've been working with the community, and that might be a positive. Some may say we're putting the bondholders' investment at risk. It really is, um, difficult to say at this point.
Really, what, what I'm asking for, I think this is all getting convoluted. What I'm asking for, I'm just asking for a little more time to see if this new program presented by the President could potentially save the one, two, three, four-
Nine.
Five, six, nine houses that could possibly qualify.
Just an extension.
Because we all know that when houses are foreclosed in neighborhoods, property values decrease. Therefore, property tax revenue is acquired by the city, decrease. So if we really want to increase property tax revenue, we need to promote homeownership in the city. And if, as Vice Mayor Haynes suggested, if putting an additional $700 foreclosure notice on a property is going to be that tipping point for a homeowner, then I don't think we're doing our due diligence to try to promote homeownership in the city.
In, in discussing this with Michelle, and she actually works a little bit closer with the foreclosure properties, is, we would ask that council authorize us to strip the parcels from the county. If we leave it with the county, they basically have stopped all collection efforts, and we go into a process that would take years to do. But we basically strip it from the county, it puts us back in our court, but then possibly just put it on hold for those individual homeowners, put it on hold, and suspend file for, let's say, I don't know, three, six months, and see what happens with the bill. And then, basically, at that point, once we get a better understanding of what's going on by what the President signed, determine if we have any positive feedback, or if it's going to affect us. And if not, then basically fast-track the foreclosure process, because we still want to collect. It takes us about nine months just to go through the whole process, then you post it, the sheriff has to go through some processes. It's a lengthy process, but we can certainly put those homeowners on a suspended file, but pull it from the county.
I think that would be reasonable, and that's what I would recommend. But in addition to it, would you be able to do any collection activity while you're holding it? Can you send a letter indicating that it's in the control of the city, and give them an opportunity to get it done?
Yeah, we'll talk, um, a little bit more with our foreclosure attorney on that one, because as soon as we send out the notice, there's initially a legal fee involved, and I, I believe that's like $400, $450. So maybe we can do some, or I know we can do something internally, send out a courtesy letter from the City of Galt, so that way they're not incurring any additional fees on top of the delinquency.
Okay. Because my biggest concern right now is, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's the people who are in their homes, who are struggling, that are on the edge. I don't want to further push them off. So this would be an opportunity, and I don't think it's unreasonable for us to extend ourselves a little bit. And like you said, we, we have the discretion, so I don't think we're, you know, we're well within the, within our agreement, and, uh, I would say that, uh, if it's up to me, I would like to see us extend that opportunity.
I have a, Inez? Or maybe this is more to Steve. I noticed, uh, the first foreclosure is actually owned by, uh, Carrington Mortgage, New Century Home Equity Loan. It's only $600. Are, are we going to be able to pick and choose? I mean, and if we do that, are we in some way being liable for saying, well, you know, you're a business, so we're not going to go by the same standards that we did the others?
Well, from what I heard earlier, and this may be, um, an error on my part, but I was hearing that we did not want to affect the individual, single-family, single homeowner. So I was thinking an individual, not necessarily a business.
That's what, that's what I was trying to get across. It would make it easier for the rest of the council, for me to read all of, all of the parcel numbers. I'd be willing to do that.
Before you do that-
My question was, are we opening ourselves up to some liability by not following the same standards all the way through? That was my concern.
Okay.
Uh, if, if- It's wonderful to help people that may still be living in these homes, or probably not, but let's look at the alternative. If we do this, and it affects our bond rating, and we go out for a sewer plant bond that may cost us 3%, but the bond company say, you know what? You can't be relied upon to follow through on your foreclosures, and we get a 4% rate, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost to the city, the taxpayers of this city.
But still, you're going back to the suggestion that we're implying that these homes should not be foreclosed on. All we're asking for is that we have time to let staff see if there's any programs under the President's new legislation-
That doesn't take effect until October 1st.
Okay, well, then, if you take six-month, uh, extension, this is August, that gives us plenty of time.
I disagree. I think we need to move forward on this and protect the taxpayers of Galt.
I would like to hear Barbara's answer, or question answered, though, if there would be an issue.
Um, no, sir, there would not be any, uh, any liability. You can handle each foreclosure on an independent basis, and by virtue of proceeding against one delinquent property and not another, it does not create any, uh, liability to the city.
And I would like, and that would be my recommendation, that we offer this extension to those individuals who are single-family dwelling homes where the families are currently living in their homes, in our own, you know, and own their homes.
Just long enough for us to decide whether or not anything under this new program could potentially save these homeowners.
Can I ask a question, then? On the page five of five, Kimball Hill Homes of California-
Right.
The total we're talking about is $29,888.58. Kimball Homes owes almost half of that. Are you directing staff to proceed with that $11,766.13?
Yes.
Yes. So you want to make a motion?
My motion would be, is that the nine properties that Andrew's mentioned, that we verify that people are still currently living in them. There are families that live in their homes specifically, not corporations, or somebody owns, uh, several homes, but people who actually live in their homes where foreclosure is a possibility. And we're only asking, we're not asking to waive it or anything, we're asking for an extension to see if there's an opportunity to help those individuals with the new programs that are coming out.
And so staff is to go there, or phone, or something, and ask the people-
Yeah, there's space. You can pick up the phone, we, I'm sure we have their numbers on record here for utilities, but you only talk in nine properties. But you know what? I think, again, I think Andrew said it best, we're here to promote homeownership in the city. And I think, uh, something like this could be, if it's a tipping point, I'd rather we not be the ones pushing somebody in that direction.
Well, I, I hear you, and I think you're well-intended, and the President's bill may or may not do whatever, but, boy, I'll tell you what, if I'm not the person on this list, but I'm about to be the next person, I'll be standing right there and say, you did it for them, and then I'll be the 11th person, and the 12th person, and the 13th person. There'll be no end to it, ever. And then, any person who's paid all their bills and somehow scrimped and did it, that person's going to share in the city, possibly, depending on how you resolve this. And I, I just don't think that's fair to those other people. So I'm going to make a motion, see if council supports it, that we take staff's recommendation on this item.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No. Prove three to two.
Now, having done that, we can still see what the President's bill does when it comes around.
It's too late.
They'll be out of the House by then.
They'll probably not in there, anyway.
Barbara, you pulled consent calendar item number seven.
I did. And I thought it was important that, um, our Director of Public Works have an opportunity to, um, explain, uh, why we didn't take the low bidder on this. Because normally we do, and this one was, uh, he was originally quite a bit more, but then I think you negotiated him down to something a little more reasonable. And, um, I think for the record, it would be good if you gave your opinion as to why we, we aren't taking the low bidder.
Okay, I'd be happy to. I do want to make one clarification. Um, we get bids from contractors. Consulting engineers do not give us bids, they give us proposals.
Okay.
We're not necessarily comparing an apple, an exact apple to an apple, when we get a proposal. Each engineer has a idea of what the work needs to be done, based on our anticipated scope of work, but we encourage the engineers to say, you're the expert, you tell us what we need to do to solve the problem. And we first look at these proposals based strictly on qualifications. Uh, certain work you cannot consider fee. A lot of federally reimbursed work, you have to award it strictly based on qualifications, without regard to the fee. We take care of a hybrid, we look at it first and say, who's the best qualified, who's the best fit, without regard to fee, and we rank, we rank them. Then we go through, and we do it again, once we've looked at the fee, because I think there is a balance of what you get. I always talk to my staff about it, a Yugo, a Cadillac, or Mercedes. You want to get the right consultant for the right price. In this particular case, the two firms that were, had lower, uh, initial proposals, were not providing the scope of services, did not have the qualifications that we felt that Corolla brought to the table. Uh, there was a significant difference in the cost of the sewer flow mon, and the wastewater flow monitoring. We're actually going to spend the winter monitoring how much flows we actually have in the pipes, how much storm flow we have. And we had a variety of different, uh, levels of that by the consultants. And so we picked Corolla as being the best qualified. They are the only firm that had actually done all three studies for the same city before. Any of the firms could have done the work for us, we felt Corolla was the best fit. They worked very hard with us. Uh, we did redo some of the scope, that came with a very high-end product. We scaled it back a little bit, tried to fit some of the budgetary needs, and they also were very anxious to work for the city, so they made some concessions in their fee. Uh, they also were providing insulation of some of the flow meters at no cost to the city. Uh, that's how anxious they are to show us what they can do. And so it was a good negotiation, and that's why we arrived at the price that we did.
I guess I'm confused. Did we write a scope of work for them to bid on? Or, or, excuse me, I'm using the wrong terminology, not bid, uh, to present-
We send out a request for proposals to the firms, basically outlining what the project is. In broad terms, we want them to, what we want them to do. We tell them it's, what the components are, but very broad. If you were building a house, you'd say you want to build a certain approximate-sized house made of wood with a certain kind of roof. You don't get involved in the nuances of what kind of wood, and how far the studs are spaced. They then come back and tell us, do they have to model every manhole? Can they model every other manhole? They figure out what the frequency is, they determine how long the schedule will take, they talk about the frequency of meetings, what the approvals are, and they determine how long it will take them to do the individual tasks. So we, we start off on a somewhat level playing field, to try to give the consultants an idea of what it is we want.
The other question, um, your second part, is you're asking for additional funds, I think, um, in addition to the $500,000, uh, $25,000, mostly for contingency. The accounts that that would come from, um, how, how are those accounts funded? Are they funded by the tax, by the ratepayers, or?
Yes and no. The original budget estimated, two years ago, with the budget, this was a project to carryover, um, was $500,000. Based on, you can see the, the proposals we received, were somewhere below that, somewhere above it. So it was a pretty good guess, two years ago, what we thought this project might cost. It is a little bit, and the contract actually was for exactly $500,000. That does not leave us any money at all to get a copy made, so I'd have to come out to council every time I want to get a blueprint made, or send a letter, or pay a permit fee to the county, or something like that. So that's why we're asking for another $25,000, to give us a little bit of, of cash flow to do some other things on the project. The funding comes from a variety of funds. The three, five, and seven funds are the stormwater, the water, the sewer, those are the ratepayers. The 13, 14, and 22 funds, those are the developer capital funds, and the 31 fund is Northeast Area Developer Capital Fund. This is being paid for by both current ratepayers, because the plans will also deal with deficiencies in the current systems, as well as talk about the expansion into the new, uh, general plan areas. So we felt it was appropriate to pay for it with both developer funds and rate user funds.
In your professional opinion, Mr. Holliday, is Corolla the most qualified and the best suited to do what we're asking them to do?
Yes.
Well, that's what we pay the big bucks for.
Um, my final question, this $500,000, that's not already included in our estimate of the upgrade of the water sewer treatment plant. This is in addition to the $49 million, I think, is what-
This is a totally separate project from the upgrade to the water, uh, the sewer treatment plant. This is basically an expansion of the wastewater, water, and storm drain transmission collection systems. This is for the pipes and the lift stations that get it to the plant. But it is, this is additional money to a totally separate CFP project.
And they, it describes it that they will, um, use two engineers on this project? Is that correct?
They have a multitude of staff, they have agreed to reduce the hourly wages for two of those staff that are doing a significant portion of the work in order to help us meet our budgetary limitations.
And I guess I would ask you, um, you feel that it is necessary for us to put this out, as opposed to even considering doing it in-house? Or are we not even capable of doing it?
We are not capable. We do not have the special expertise, we do not have the staff resources to do this, um, with the staff that I have. They, they could do this, but they couldn't do anything else. There are thousands of hours of work included in this. You take a half a million dollars, divide by an average of $120 an hour, and you can see the, the man-hours that it would take, or the person hours, excuse me, to, uh, do something like this. There's also special computer modeling that has to be done. My staff right now does not have the experience or the training in order to do that.
So, if this money was coming out of your pocket, you would still do it the same way?
I spend every penny like it's my own, and I would do it the same way. Corolla can do this a lot better than I could.
If we were to begin doing some of these studies by ourselves in-house, Mr. Holliday, how many staff members do you think you'd have to hire to be able to handle this workload?
Top of my head, at least six. We do look at doing some of these projects in-house where we can. One of them, the sanitary sewer management program, with the onset of my new utility superintendent, Des Moniz, he's had experience in doing that. So, he and Aiden Selby, my street supervisor, they're teaming up, we're going to do majority of that work in-house. We previously talked about, we had a consultant do the original study, talking about having them follow-up, but we're looking at, they have the ability to do that, so we're going to turn to them in-house staff first.
Well, I just wanted to be sure that we felt like we were giving our ratepayers the best bang for their buck, and felt like we needed to, you know, be sure that they felt that we had looked at this from every direction before we spend their money. So, having said that, I would move to approve.
Do we have a second? Oh, we have one speaker, Mr. Slaughterback. You're doing a good job, too. Thanks.
John Slaughterback, living in City of Galt. Thank you for questioning this, Barbara, I appreciate that. I can't help but question a lot of things. I don't know anything about this, and so I can understand council not knowing anything, and we'll vote for it. But if it was my money, I would really want to understand more what's going on, and I will say that staff is real capable of explaining to you about why they need it. I mean, it's, I mean, they've got a good reason, and they'll give you a good reason, but I'm not satisfied that we're controlling our expenses, and I know that you're going to vote for it, because you're in the same shoes I'm in. You don't know either. And I wished I knew more about it, to where I could make a say positively that I know that we're doing what we could, for sure, because half a million dollars, and we can't do any of it, and yet, we had an excuse why we couldn't. But it's a lot of money that we're spending, and each time staff brings something before council, we pass it, when we don't know.
John, you're part of the oversight committee, aren't you? Did you not have access to?
This apparently isn't part of it.
Okay, okay, I see.
This is not, there's nothing to do with the upgrade of the water treatment plant. Excuse me, wastewater treatment plant.
Well, I did make my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a quick comment. If the alternative is hiring additional employees, it's something that I don't agree with, and the consultants are better able to do the job, and if we hire more employees, we've got to pay benefits, and the whole idea of increasing staff at the city, so I agree with this. Yes.
Call for the vote?
Does anybody second it?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, approve five zero. Do we have a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, approve five zero. It's communications, does anyone have anything under communications? Seeing none, we will move to the regular calendar. Item I-1, under Treasurer's Office, is the Treasurer's Report for the period ending June 2008. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Treasurer, Sean Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The main responsibility and duty of the Treasurer is to make sure that the money is safe, the city's money is safe, taxpayer money is safe. And once, of course, you make sure that it's safe, then you have to verify and make sure that it's liquid, and then, of course, once that happens, then you look for the highest yield. Recently, in the news, I want to address three different subjects, or topics. In the news, you've read a lot about Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. You've read a lot about, of course, the state budget crisis, and you've also read about FDIC insurance, and how important that has popped up. So, I'll take the first item first, and that is the Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac issue. The city of Galt purchases Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac bonds. Now, these bonds are, have been, and still are, all AAA rated, and if you've noticed and kept up with the news reports, President Bush, you know, signed a bill increasing the credit limits of Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae. Now, that's only if the two firms need that extra credit. So, I believe there was a question at the last council meeting, is, are the bonds that we have, the city, guaranteed? And the one-word short answer is yes. The, a little bit longer answer is, it is implicitly implied that the US government will, in fact, back up Fannie and Freddie, and as witnessed by what the President signed. So, and as of this date, both Freddie and Fannie have not borrowed anything, they're still, you know, surviving on their own. Now, remember also that you can purchase stock in Freddie and Fannie. I will want to make this clear, the city does not own stock in Freddie and Fannie, we purchase their bonds, and as a bondholder, that's where the United States Treasury has, in fact, you know, agreed to increase the credit limits, only if needed be. So, that, those bonds that the city holds is and are safe, they're still AAA rated. Next topic is the state's budget crisis. We all, you know, have read the papers of what's going on there. The city has money in the state of California Local Agency Investment Fund, and this is a fund where all, just local agencies pool their money, and the state of California turns around and invests that money. There was legislation that was pushed by the California Municipal Treasurer's Association many years ago, when there was a budget crisis at that time, to say that the state of California cannot borrow, or appropriate, or steal those funds. Whatever belongs to the local agencies is, in fact, that's going to remain in the local agency fund. The state cannot borrow those funds just to make their budget crisis go away. So, in that regard, our money with the state of California is also safe. And lastly, you've read reports about FDIC insurance, and of course, what happened with IndyMac Bank in Southern California. I will say that the city of Galt has two CDs in with Farmers and Merchants Bank. Now, a bank has two options, as far as what they want to do when they receive monies from a municipality. The first option is Farmers and Merchants, or any bank, what they do is they collateralize that money, which means that they put up security, 110% of whatever the municipality has put up, and that security is then held by an independent third party. In this case, right now, the city has two CDs totaling $6 million. So, Farmers and Merchants have, what, $6,600,000 of securities held by somebody. If for some unknown reason, and I do not wish this, trust me, that Farmers and Merchants declares bankruptcy, then we, as a city, have a right to go to that third-party custodian and receive those securities. So, I want to emphasize that that money is safe also. A bank also has another option, whenever you invest money with them, and this is not just for a municipality, but is for individuals, too. There's a program that is called CDARS. And what it is, if you go into a bank, and I'll use Mr. Baldwin here as an example, Mr. Baldwin has a million dollars, he goes into a bank, and he gives that million dollars to the bank. That bank then will keep $100,000 of that, to make sure he's covered by FDIC insurance. They then go to the CDARS network, and that network then takes the rest, or the remaining $900,000, and invests in nine different banks, under Mr. Baldwin's name. Thus, every bank has $100,000 with coverage, so that way, Mr. Baldwin would then have FDIC coverage for the full $1 million. Now, every bank has that option. As I said, the city has $6 million invested in Farmers and Merchants, they decided to collateralize it, not go through the CDARS program for that. So, I really want to emphasize the fact that the city's money is, in fact, safe. You know, that's the major, that's pretty much all of the money that the city currently has invested. Now, once a year, I always tell the public and the taxpayers how much money that the city has earned in interest over this past fiscal year. And this past fiscal year, it had, the total, the 2007, 2008, the total is $2,945,501.74. Now, the interest collected here, of course, gets divided up into different sub-accounts, depending on how much money that one sub-account has in that pooled money. So, it is divided up, it doesn't go in one particular fund. I will also state that the interest income accounts for about 4.5%, 5% of the money that the city, the revenue that the city brings in. Also, that figure right there, it's going to go down, and it's real easy as to why. Interest rates have fallen. So, as interest rates fall, very simple, the city doesn't make as much interest. As interest rates rise, of course, we would make more. I mean, that's, you know, that's economics 1A. So, I will answer any questions that the city council has regarding the Treasurer's report, but I ask for your approval for June of 2008. And I'm sorry that I'm hoarse.
Comments by council? Vice Mayor Haines?
No comments.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move, we accept the Treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, approve five zero.
Thank you. We always like that it's time for the report, we like to see it.
I like to, I like to tell the taxpayers what they have and how they earn their money, make sure that money's working for them.
Next item under the regular calendar is item I-2, which is the discussion of the City of Elk Grove's Sphere of Influence Amendment Request. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Planning Department.
Thank you. Liz, could you bring the screen down for me? The City of Elk Grove has made application to the Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission for a Sphere of Influence Amendment in the southern and southeastern part of their city. As part of that process, LAFCO has sent us a copy of their application, and they're requesting that we either communicate the city's official position on this project to LAFCO, or formally indicate that the proposal will not affect the City of Galt, so that they have comments from Galt either way. Comments are due to LAFCO by August 15th, which is next Friday, so staff will forward city council's comments on the proposal after tonight's meeting. I'd like to just briefly go over the basics of their application and the results so far of their meet and confer with Sacramento County. Council members should have paper copies of these PowerPoint slides in front of you, if it's easier for you to follow along that way, but I want to make sure that the audience could understand and follow along. As I noted, this slide represents the City of Elk Grove's current Sphere of Influence application. It's basically the area that's outlined in red, so within this boxed area, and extending out to here. The, on the east side of Highway 99, this is Highway 99 running here, on the east side of 99, this is Grantline Road, so it's everything south of Grantline, down to Kasumnas River. Bond Road intersects with Grantline about here, so it's just short of where Bond Road intersections, is the eastern extent of that. As you cross Highway 99, Grantline basically becomes Camera Road, that's their current city limits on the west side of Highway 99. It extends over to Bruceville, jogs north to Bilby, comes down and follows some parcel lines, comes out to I-5, so that they had some access to I-5 in this area, this is Hood Franklin Road here, then comes down the railroad tracks to basically Eschinger Road, follows Eschinger eastward, Eschinger does a little jog here, so they're including these two parcels that would front on Eschinger, and connects back up to Highway 99. The city limits of Elk Grove is concurrent with their current sphere of influence. They have argued that they have approximately 600 acres remaining of vacant infill land, so they are looking to expand their sphere of influence with LAFCO. As indicated in their application materials, Elk Grove argues that they are constrained in their growth, and again, here is their sphere of influence application. They're constrained by stone lakes, nature preserve to the west, the regional sanitation facility to the north, as well as the City of Sacramento boundary. They've got a couple of pretty much developed areas, county planning areas that constrain them to the north, and the Jackson Highway Visioning Plan area to their east. So, basically, they're looking to expand south as one of their primary areas. The county of Sacramento has been meeting and conferring with Elk Grove since earlier this year, in accordance with LAFCO law and procedures. During those discussions, the county recommended that the Elk Grove's Sphere of Influence boundary should be modified for several factors. One, it should include only land that the city intends to urbanize in the near term. Two, it should exclude land that's encumbered by existing conservation easements, such as Swenson Hawk or Vernal Pools. Three, it should exclude land that's external to the urban area, that's intended to remain rural and agricultural in nature, and four, that excludes land within the 100-year floodplain. Based on these discussions, the county and Elk Grove reached sort of a conceptual agreement to develop a revised boundary, addressing most of the county's concerns, at least for discussion purposes. So, the next slide kind of shows what that compromise boundary for discussion purposes looks like. Elk Grove is still proceeding with their original application, but they wanted to present this as another option. The county is basically saying that all of this light blue area is floodplain, so that should come out of the sphere of influence. So, you can kind of see, instead of going all the way down to here, before the Kasumnas River, the boundary would now run up here, along south of Grantline Road. Again, same issue in here, a small chunk of the area here would come out, and pretty much this entire area that was originally in would be removed. There's also a current conservation easement preserve area here, so this chunk of that would come out. And the last slide basically kind of shows the county, the original Elk Grove Sphere of Influence application, with the county's proposed boundary overlaid in the green crosshatch areas, you can see how they coincide. So, the county is obviously somewhat smaller than the city's original request. The letter from Sacramento County is included in your packet. It goes on to say that there are other issues that they still have yet to raise, or that are currently unresolved in their discussions. These include creating an urban-rural buffer on the north side of Eschinger Road to protect the ag and open space uses from encroaching urban development, establishing zoning and development standards prior to the SOI approval, instead of afterwards, which is what Elk Grove is proposing. They're basically saying, we'll do specific plans later, and kind of come up with what those standards are. The county wants them to establish permanent open space within the area to be urbanized, wants them to address potential impacts to downstream drainage and flooding, potential impacts to listed species and agricultural operations, and they're concerned about the city's future changes to the pending South Sacramento County Habitat Conservation Plan. With this increased urban area, there would be another 4,500 acres of additional urban land that would have to be mitigated in that plan. Finally, they're basically indicating that infrastructure needs, including transportation, water, sewer, all the standards need to be addressed. So, with that, like I said, LAFCO is basically looking for, if the city has an official position on Elk Grove's Sphere of Influence application, they would like to hear from us no later than next Friday.
Do we have any speakers that would like to take the podium before we move on to council comments? Constance Connolly is our first speaker. If anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a speaker sheet and pass it up to the front.
Good evening, my name is Constance Connolly, and I live in Elk Grove, please no boos. I've lived there for 30 years. This sphere of influence is, once again, going to cause a lot of problems, because we do not quite understand what it all means. Our city is eight years old, we made some changes in our city council in 2006, because the original council didn't quite get it. Our new council members seem to understand a little bit more, even though the vote was five zero. We are very concerned about the SOI, and the green belt, and the floodplain. I've had conversations in the last couple days with both Mayor Gary Davis and Vice Mayor Pat Hume. If I have to get them to sign in blood that they aren't going to build on the floodplain, we will, and we will hold them accountable. The thing is, is silence does mean consent, and we are not being silent in Elk Grove. We hold our leaders accountable. We are having forums, we're having, we've asked them to come to the table, to meet with citizens, we've even brokered, like the Elk Grove Community Connection does all the time, and has done twice here in Galt. We've hosted meetings where we can bring everybody together. I've spoken to both Gary and Pat, and said, come on, we're going to throw out the gauntlet, going to go down and ask Andrew and Dawn, vice mayor to vice mayor, mayor to mayor, let's go to the table, and let's talk about some of this stuff, because we all need answers. We're concerned about our neighbors down in Wilton. We don't not, we do not want this to be the Hatfield's and McCoy's, but we do not understand what's going on, and we need to get some concrete answers. And we will get them, because we will hold our leaders accountable, that's what we do in Elk Grove. We're not really that bad. The other thing I want to talk about a little bit is the recall. I got some criticism that we had a recall down in Elk Grove. Yes, we did. When you have two council members that have 16 and 14 felony conflict of interest violations levied against them by the Sacramento County jury, when you have that woman sitting over there in orange, threatened by a council member, and bullied, intimidated, and threatened again and again, and the Sacramento County Grand Jury tells you, oh, no, you don't, you don't get to threaten your citizens. Public dissent is the very core of which this country was built on. You damn rights will try to recall you. You do not have the right to threaten Sandy Russell, and I will cry about it, because we stood up for her, and we made a statement. So, yes, if council members do not have the rights, but when you, you need to stand up for what you believe in, I believe in that, but when someone says to me, you people down in Elk Grove had your recall, our recall was based on the Sacramento County Grand Jury. There's a big difference in that, in what's going on, and to compare the two, and levy that towards me is incorrect, and I will stand up for it every single time. So, please, I do not mean you any disrespect, but there is a huge difference. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hey, Constance. What's the population of Elk Grove right now?
Well, when I moved there, there was 10,000. There's now 140, 30 years later. And I forgot one more thing. We're having, speaking of growth, if you don't know already, there is the Elk Grove-Rancho Cordova-Folsom Connector coming our way. And we are having a meeting August 19th, Elk Grove City Council Chambers, hosted by Vice Mayor Pat Hume and Supervisor Dawn Natoli. Come learn about that connector that's on its way. And let your voice be heard about it, because it will affect your community as well. So we all invite you up. We've come twice to your house. We'd like you to invite you to ours.
What was the date again?
August the 19th. 6:30 Elk Grove City Council Chambers. It starts 6:30 with a meet and greet hosted by Dawn and Pat, followed by a program. We have, this SOI thing, if there's room, if there's time at the end of the program, we will accept questions about the SOI. But this basically is to focus on the connector, the four alternatives. We're concerned about the Town of Sheldon. If you haven't been to the Town of Sheldon, it's a very special place. And so we're all coming together to try to figure, make some sense of it, because that is coming, you know, in our region's history, you know, future.
Do you know, is this what the residents, or the people that live in Wilton, are they upset with any part of this?
I think Bill is...
Where's Bill?
Bill will come up and speak with, you know, he's Wilton Action Group. We're basically from the Elk Grove Community Connection and the Elk Grove Coalition Advocating Proper Planning, EG CAP. Basically, we haven't taken a position as yet. The only thing we're concerned about is the Green Belt and the floodplain. Now, we have our insurances that there is going to be no building in either. And my question to Gary and Pat was, even though they're new to the council, given Elk Grove's history in the last eight years, have we proven that we've done the best possible management of our growth, possible? And with that said, have we proven to the people that you can entrust us with more? And right now, frankly, that answer is no. And so until they prove to us otherwise, yes, Gary and Pat have kind of inherited the sins of their fathers. We made a change in the last election. We've got three of the original council members coming, you know, again, and they're gonna be held accountable for the fact that we did not manage our growth properly. You can't blame it on a county anymore. That county excuse doesn't wash. Yes, we only have 600 acres left, and that's Laguna Ridge. And if you've taken a little trip up to Elk Grove, you know what's happened to Laguna Ridge, and you want to talk about foreclosures, come on down. We'll have some serious talk about foreclosures, because we are being hit, and we are being hit hard. And no one's feeling it more than we are. So please don't beat up on Elk Grove. You know, we're good people.
So, Constance, so we have 140,000 population. We have thousands and thousands of empty lots.
Yes.
Bankrupt developers. And so I'm curious, why is the council coming forward, in your opinion, in asking to add 10,000 acres to their city?
Because I honestly believe, because we didn't plan well. We need to have jobs in Elk Grove. We don't have business parks. We don't have commercial developments. We don't have the types of things that's going to draw people to Elk Grove. You've just read about our mall. Our mall's gonna sit there now.
It's very sad.
It's very, very, very sad.
Well, not for us, but for you guys.
Well, you know, we are neighbors.
Well, but we're gonna spend our money in Elk Grove, so it's good for Galt.
You are? Well, you know, it's very sad now, because it's on hold until 2010, wink, wink, maybe. And that's sad, because what's that going to turn into? And, you know, we feel our own pain, trust me. We don't want to pass it on to anybody else. But the whole thing is, is that we're worried about the floodplain, we're worried about the Green Belt. And I do believe what Pat and Gary have told us. I've talked to Jim Cooper a little bit. But until, and I will hold them accountable. I'm an EOC. I hold, I'm an equal opportunity citizen. I hold everybody accountable. Don, Dan, Daryl can tell you that. And so the whole thing is that, until we get our questions answered, we cannot, you know, give our opinion. So I'm here to tell you that we are going to open it up to a forum, and, Dawn?
Elk Grove has had eight years to sign a Green Belt agreement with Galt. That's something they're not gonna do, and something they don't want to do. So to let them take all this land and say they're gonna do a Green Belt, I think is a bunch of crap, so.
You don't believe that, when we had the forum here, you didn't believe what Gary said?
Elk Grove has had eight years to sign an agreement. Gary's been on the council a year and a half. We still don't have an agreement.
Okay. So if we, if we take it to them that we want an agreement, that we want it signed, sealed, and delivered, you know, we can, they work for us. We have this great org shark in Elk Grove. And they work for us, and we'll ask them for one.
Yeah, all the meetings between Galt and Elk Grove ended not long ago.
I know, but that was, you know, you have to think about who those two-by-twos were. And, you know, they did not fare anybody any, any good.
The best way to protect this land is to leave it in the county's control, because the county wants to protect the land, not to give it to Elk Grove.
Well, you know, you know, Tim, the thing is, is that we don't know, you know? And I'm not an advocate for, against, I'm Switzerland on this one, because I don't have all the answers, and you know me, it's being pretty opinionated. So until, I've had long conversations with Gary, and about this very issue, because there isn't any, no one feels secure that what the council is gonna say they're gonna do, they're really gonna do, because we have nothing to base it on. We're asking them, they're asking us for a leap of faith that they're gonna do right by us this time. And because it's a new council, it's a new day. And we have to believe that, until they prove us otherwise. Now, whatever your position is, we're in Elk Grove, and we're gonna fight for what we believe we need to be doing best for our city. So I'm not asking you to support it. I'm not asking you to send a letter that says that, you know, you think, like you said, it's a lot of crap. But I'm just saying, come to the table. We're neighbors. Our cities are neighbors, and we're gonna have to learn to work together. And someday, we are gonna have our Green Belt, and I'll be the first one down there standing right next to you, Tim, because we're gonna get it.
I hate to put you on the spot as an...
Uh-oh.
...official representative of the City of Elk Grove.
I'm not.
Since we don't have one here. But I'm curious what the land use designations are gonna look like, because I've heard Gary talk a lot about wanting to create more jobs in the community, which could potentially ease some of the traffic constraints on Highway 99 by forcing commuters to work downtown. What do the land use designations look like? How much of it that we're looking at here is gonna be built out as rooftops and not houses?
Well, it's a very good question, because we don't know. And so there, again, what does this all mean? Because Gary does have a big vision of, you know, changing the general plan for more commercial and things like that. I'm not gonna speak for Gary, because that's not, that does him a disservice. I'm certainly not gonna speak for Pat. You know, he has a strong vision of all of this. And, you know, until we know otherwise, both of them have agreed to come to the table, we're gonna take them up on their offer. And we're gonna ask them the hard questions. You know, they, they're more than willing to do that, and I've gotta give them their kudos, that they're willing to come face their critics, you know, in an open forum, and answer the tough questions. And trust me, that first forum that we had, Gary got a lot of, you know, tough questions levied on him. And I think he did a pretty good job.
Now, in Gary's defense, every time that we've met, Gary has expressed his strong support for a Green Belt.
Yes.
And the only concern that I have is that he doesn't have the votes on the city council to make that a reality.
Well, you know what? We'll ask him. You know, we'll ask him point-blank at public comment. We went down to Galt, Sandy and I'll go, went down to Galt, and they told us that they don't think that you guys can give us three votes for a Green Belt. But there's an election coming up. And we've got a couple of candidates who, you know, actually believe the way we do, that we do want that Green Belt. And we're not gonna take no for an answer. So, you know, how that all plays out in the future, we don't know. But we're going to, we're gonna affect our positive change, and can you continue to do what we did in 2006, because it has fared us very well. And we will hold them accountable. Both Gary and Pat ran on platforms of transparency, accountability, honesty, and integrity. And we remind them every step of the way. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
So you're gonna take us up on our offer? Mayor to mayor, vice mayor to vice mayor?
Absolutely.
All righty.
Thank you.
August 19th, everybody.
August 19th is our next meeting.
It's a meeting night. It's been a long time since our friends from Wilton have actually been to a city council meeting here in Galt. We're glad to see ya.
I guess so. I had, I didn't have any plans to come in and speak tonight, I just came in to listen. But after you put all this stuff up here, and I've been involved in the Elk Grove SOI since, let's see, March 19th. Before then, I was fat, dumb, and happy, and everything was cool. And then all of a sudden, Elk Grove came up with this SOI that came across the river. And so we had a meeting at the firehouse out in Wilton. And basically, we had a Boston Tea Party. Instantaneously overnight, the Wilton Action Group became a reality. And unfortunately, I got up and said something, and next thing I knew, I was out in front. And so it's been a little hectic sense, and it's been a major education in civics 101 since that point in time, four and a half months. But I did an excellent presentation tonight of exactly what the maps and what's going on. And I'll just make a couple of quick points, not take too much of your time. But from Wilton's standpoint right now, once, once we got the muskets loaded up in Elk Grove, within seven days amended their SOI, and they pulled back across the river, but they stayed right on the river. And we're not happy with that for a couple of reasons. If you look at the map that's up there now, in that clear area where the count, where that is the floodplain. And what'll happen is, if Elk Grove gets in there, and I don't care what kind of, first of all, I don't, I don't trust the City of Elk Grove. I don't believe what they have to say. We have a lot of friends in Elk Grove. But they're very selective in their verbiage. If you look through their SOI, you never see the word "never." It's always "intent," or "at this time," et cetera, et cetera. So they can change their mind anytime they want. And if they get into that floodplain, what's gonna happen? The Casumus River floods about every 10, 12, 13 years. And that floodplain, if you had the other map that shows the floodplain, it's gonna come back. You can see where that floodplain is. Well, it's gonna come a lot farther over into Wilton. So that's gonna affect us from a physical standpoint. In addition, they're gonna basically destroy a very unique habitat with that Deer Creek and Casumus River. And it's a beautiful area in there. And the farmers are doing a great job in there of working with the environment. And so they'll, they'll basically ruin that just about like they've done everything else. And so, you know, our, our position, the Wilton Action Group, is that they need to stay out of the floodplain. We're concentrating primarily between, basically, let's just say, Wilton Road to the freeway.
Do you want to show us on the map behind you where you guys are concentrating?
Well, Wilton's gonna be over in this area right in here. So with the flood and the, actually, we're kinda off the map. Well, we're all part of that. This is probably the Dillard Road.
Yes.
Yeah. So if that, if they come into this floodplain, which is down along the Casumus River, that'll come all the way much farther over into Wilton. And that's, that's a major concern for us, in addition to the habitat. And for you folks here in Galt, I would think you'd be really concerned about them going into that floodplain, because that's gonna affect everything downriver. And your Casumus River Preserve, it's gonna be different, you're gonna get a different flow, et cetera. The hydrology has changed, and the whole bit. And so if I was you folks, I'd be very concerned about that. And we have a meeting tomorrow night with Lafco. We're gonna express some of our concerns and so forth. And so that's, you know, that's, that's basically where we're at. And I'm glad that you guys are, are taking a look at it. And in a short period of time, in four and a half months, we've come a long way with our Wilton Action Group. In about 30 days, we gathered over 2,700 signatures. Approximately 500 of those were in Elk Grove last weekend. And that was kind of an interesting experience. But the people in Elk Grove said that they need to concentrate on their infill, they need to get vertical with their thinking, and think about walkability and all those things. So, thanks.
Mr. Katzer, I want to congratulate you and your group for standing up for protecting your quality of life.
Yeah.
Because if you don't, it will be gone.
Yeah, thank you. It's been quite an education.
Al Baldwin, and I definitely live in Galt. I'm gonna tell you, how far is it from Arnold Road to where they want to go? Does anybody know?
From Arno?
Arno Road.
Five, five, six miles.
Five miles?
She can, Sandy can show you.
Can you bring it up, Sandy?
Yeah, it's...
Right there on the bottom.
It's, it's not far, really. And if you're gonna go to Lafco, and they want to know what your feelings are on this whole thing, if you're not complaining about too much of them coming, you'll say, "Well, we don't want them to come down here." But if you're only going about a half a mile or so north from Twin Cities Road, your statement is gonna be made that, "Well, we don't really want them to come any closer, and we want to stop them, you know, we just don't want them to come." If you would just increase it to Arnold Road, you would make a major statement that you don't want anybody coming into your area, and your, and your development won't be for another 30 years. I mean, but you can say, "We're gonna do this, do that," but it's not gonna even happen for 30 years or more, maybe 25, give or take. But you would at least show Lafco that this is what you, this is your territory, and it's not gonna happen with Elk Grove jumping and going anywhere else. This is yours. You don't have to, this won't be developed overnight. I mean, if you don't protect your own property, believe me, and this is just the beginning. And don't worry about floodplains. You can worry about them, but Natomas was a floodplain. It's gonna happen. I'm telling you now. Either Galt starts thinking a little bigger and not so small, and you can control your growth, whatever goes in that area, it doesn't matter. If you're talking Del Webb, you can say, "No, we don't want Del Webb in there. This is gonna be, this is what we want." Same thing you did with the Walmart thing, you put restrictions on how large. You have the power. I don't see what you're afraid of, of going all the way up there.
Al, I think, based on your argument, I think it's the exact opposite. Galt has been responsible in its growth, and that's why we're staying out of the floodplain. And Elk Grove should do the same thing. So I think it's the exact opposite argument that you're giving.
I understand your thinking, but look what's happening.
Mr. Baldwin, you heard the comments from planning staff. She was reading directly from the response from the county, which gets a lot of their, you know, opinions based on Lafco decisions. Lafco does not want land approved for annexation. That is not part of your immediate growth picture. You're saying, you know, expand all the way out to Arnold Road to protect it for 30 years from now. That's not what Lafco approves land used expansions for.
Well, I can tell you this, and you're, the small thinking, and I feel it's small thinking, just going 3,000 or so feet north of Twin Cities, maybe a little farther, is very small compared to what Elk Grove is thinking, and they're going ahead with their ideas. You gotta make a decision one way or another. You won't even be here on the council when this all happens. I may not even be alive when it happens. But the thing is, is you can't think just five years out. You're gonna have to think a lot farther than that. It's just, Elk Grove's a perfect example...
Elk Grove's plan a year ago was double of what you're looking at right now.
Okay.
So they pulled it back significantly.
They took, instead of five steps forward, they only took two. So in 10 years or five years from now, they'll do the same thing again. It's a gradual, it's, it's like boiling a frog in cold water. They don't even realize, you don't even realize what's happening to your city until you're, you're gone. I'm just suggesting that...
It's lucky we have the Conservancy.
...think a little bit bigger, that's all. It doesn't mean growth, but it does...
I know. We just want to get it and protect it, right? We don't want to build on it.
No, no, you will, you'll have to project to build on it. But I'll tell you what, if this town stays at 23,000 to 30,000 people...
Al, our general plan is up to 50,000 people. I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I'm just saying, it will, 50,000 people, when will you have that?
Over the next 20 years.
20 or 30 years?
Well, we've already spent five years on the general plan, so it's about 20.
Okay. Well, 20, 30. If, if you're lucky to get it then, okay? If, if you're lucky to get it then, okay? But by that time, it, we could be losing all kinds of stuff, all kinds of revenue. And I'm just suggesting that you just look a little bit longer, a little farther, a little more forward, instead of so restricted. That's all. I'm not for any special group. I'm not trying to get anything here. I'm just suggesting that you look a little bit farther, that's all. For your own, for the city's protection, protection. Not anybody else is, not, not trying to push anything. I'm just saying, basically, it's, it seems to be very simple to see this. Okay?
Thanks.
Any other speakers?
Again, I'm still Kathleen Amos, and I'm still wear all the different hats that I mentioned earlier. I am speaking as a citizen of the city of Galt. I was not, I did not put this on my speaker sheet because I didn't realize that this issue was on the agenda tonight. I came for another reason. But basically, what I want to say is, my concern is that we protect the floodplain and that we protect the green belt. And I think that I, I'm, I'm very aware that the Elk Grove Councilman, Patrick Hume, it was sponsored by Developer Agenda in the last election and was elected as a result of that support from the same group that we continue to struggle with here in our little town for the same exact reasons. And I, I know that the Wilton Action Group was out with their petitions in front of the grocery stores a week ago Sunday, trying to get as much support as possible. I, I think Elk Grove needs to grow up and slow down like Galt did two years ago, and I think we need to continue to do that and be, be responsible about our development. I mean, it's, with the economic times being what they are, people have to be creative about the solutions, and rooftops are, more rooftops are not the solution. So, I just want to urge the city council to consider the fact that "no" is a complete sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, we'll move to council comments. Vice Mayor Haynes.
I do have some concerns. And the last thing I would want to do is see them go into the floodplain, but we should also keep in mind, it wasn't more than five years ago that Elk Grove had increased their sphere of influence by about, what was it, 2,500 acres? And they're already back asking for more, which concerns me. But I think even that what we see here is, it is still too large. If memory serves me correct, it still does not meet SECOG's, is it, and Darrell, you would know this better than I, you'd remember this, SECOG's plan for the county.
Blueprint.
Blueprint. That would still be outside that blueprint. Is that correct?
I'd have to pull the map out.
It's been a while since we've talked or looked at it.
It could be. We could pull the map and see.
So, I, I would still even object to what they're asking there. If it was up to me, I think they should pull it back even more.
You have a specific area you'd like to see pulled back, or just a general area?
I would like to see that. Thanks. North of the floodplain, they're taking out altogether.
Can you pull up the other map, maybe the, I think the first map you showed?
But, are they Consumnis River?
No, the other one. You mean...
North of it, the...
North of the floodplain, just like we've done. We pulled everything out of our floodplain.
On the east side, take it all out.
And what about on the west side?
I think they should pull that up, bring it back up, instead of, what's the name of the street?
Essinger?
Essinger, yeah. They should bring, yeah, well... I think that's a little bit too close to the, the river there. I think they need to bring it back. I think, if it was me, I, I think they should bring that up further north.
So, it sounds like you agree with the county. They should move it back away from the floodplain and...
Right.
Pull it back.
And, that's right. I would agree with the county on that.
Okay. We're trying to bring up a copy of the Elk Grove blueprint proportions on SECOG's website.
Okay.
I would ask the staff, have, have you discussed this with the county at all at this point, their arguments or their reasoning?
I think pretty much Curtis had some discussions with them with concerns over the habitat conservation plan impacts.
Well, it looked like staff's concerns, there was just mostly or mainly two. One was the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, and then the need to protect the open space. And I think he, he was talking about something definite as far as protecting the open space.
Yes.
How would it affect the South County Habitat Conservation Plan? Would it slow it down, or what would the effect be?
I think the county's intent is to proceed with adoption with everybody's general plan as they are, even our general plan and our proposed sphere of influence. We would have to go back and amend the HCP if that is approved. The, I think their, the county's main concern is that this is looking at the whole region and developing mitigation and areas of, of proposed conservation. The more urbanization you add to that, it just starts driving up the cost of conservation. There's less and less land available. So, this is adding another 4,500 acres, I think they indicated, that would require mitigation.
Yeah. And so, that would mean buying land to mitigate.
Exactly.
Raising the cost.
Yeah.
I would say, I would share some of the same concerns that the staff has brought, has brought out.
Councilman Claire?
I was going to say, also, I can go see if I've got a blueprint map handy. If you don't, I think you'll just get it there on the website. Well, first off, I'm glad they've already pulled back to where they pulled back to. We've discussed this on a number of occasions, and three years ago, I guess, about this time, three years ago, we did strike a proposed green belt agreement that Elk Grove did not agree to sign. The city of, our city and the county agreed to, and there was going to be a three-party group. Tim and I were the two-by-two, you heard, mentioned earlier. And our two-by-two was willing to sign it. The county's two-by-two were willing to sign it. What we have to be careful about is, give or take, we didn't have an exact map. We had philosophical points of what we wanted each to commit to. They are abiding by what we had hoped they would agree to. If you recall, and I could probably go find that, I mean, we, we all have seen the proposed SOI maps that came to Twin Cities Road, and obviously...
Five, right?
Yeah. So, we, we were pretty upset about that. We got them back from that, back again, back again, and philosophically, the, there's areas in there no one can develop, and that's good. And, but philosophically, what we were asking for was that they would never come this side of the Consumnis, because LAFCO likes, like our southern boundaries are river, they like rivers, they're easy points of delineation. Doesn't mean you develop to them, but it means it makes it easy where you end. So, I don't disagree with anything I've really heard said here. I'd be careful, now that we've got them where we asked them to get, to now say, that's not good enough. Because, again, think of where they started, Twin Cities Road, think about where they are. They've gone to where we asked them to be. And there's a little bit of being careful about how much we tell other people how to run their cities, or that we want them to tell us how to run ours, from council to council, from SECOG, from the county for that matter. So, I would suggest that we speak to what LAFCO asked us to speak to, which is, how does this proposal affect our city? And I would keep within that area, because like I say, I think you're gonna, I think you're going to ruffle some feathers in areas that it's really none of our business. I mean, we're trying to create cooperation between Elk Grove and Lowdy, because they're our northern and southern neighbors. And so, when we can work together on transportation on the 99 corridor, creating a green belt, whatever, that's good. I think they've done much of what we've asked for, for years here. Now, to the gentleman, I'm not sure where he is now, from Wilton, I realize that he doesn't meet what you're asking for, and you ought to speak for your city. But I just think FEMA, the Corps, SECOG, everybody in the region, I can think of, the county, LAFCO, no one is supporting allowing building in the floodplain, and the Natomas has had to cease it. And the Corps and FEMA are even looking at, as you know, going to beyond the 100-year floodplain. So, whether it's in their sphere, I realize if it's not in their sphere, why that is better. But no one's going to let them build in there. If you go to the map that had sort of what the county's asking for now, that shows that little line of floodplain, Sandy?
Pardon me?
The one that shows where floodplain, or I think it was your last map you showed.
Out there? Or that one?
There you go. I think that's fairly reasonable, because I don't think that, that uncolored area going towards Wilton, for example, I don't think anyone's going to let them be in there. I don't say they have to be in this sphere, but I don't know how much we want to argue that it shouldn't. And like I say, I...
But the green is the county's proposal.
Right.
The red is, so are you agreeing with the county?
I'm agreeing with the county wants, that they don't want them to build into the, into the un-green area, and I don't think they will be allowed to. Like I say, we, we worked on for years to get them to pledge the Consumnis, which is where they are now. I think it's going to send an odd signal to say, now that you did what we asked you to do, now we want you to do something else. So, and I agree with the speaker's comment. I mean, if, I mean, I think Pat Hume and Gary Davis aren't exactly perceived to be on the same side of a lot of issues, but they are on the same side of this one, apparently, that they both feel this is doable and the pledges they've made about it. If I'm not mistaken, Gary Davis worked for now Senator Steinberg, and I've been following from SECOG and for our council, Senate Bill 375, that deals with a lot of this, too. And at SECOG, we've just put forth the last six amendments we've asked the senator to incorporate, and it deals with a lot of this very issue, and I'll, I'll copy you on where we are on that. And one of the clear things that Steinberg is saying is that he will respect, while setting goals, he will respect from the state's role not to attempt to make local land decision uses, that that right remains with the elected body in that community. We're certainly all welcome to comment on what we think about it, but even he, who has some strong opinions about those things, is saying that by no way does he want his legislation to be interpreted to in any way interfere with local agencies' land use decisions. And ultimately, LAFCO's that body anyway. So, those are my thoughts. Like I say, just, just keep those in mind with whatever comments we set up, that we, I think we ought to try and keep some cooperation between our two cities and acknowledge how much progress they've made, this map compared to the ones they've put out before.
But you do have concerns about keeping, or them coming into the floodplain, right?
Sure. Yeah. I feel safer about it, because as I say, you've got the Corps who's federal, you've got FEMA who's federal, SECOG, the county, you've got LAFCO, every agency, none of those agencies are allowing development in the floodplain. At one time, somebody, in my opinion, very foolishly allowed Natomas to do it, and I'm glad they stopped it.
Do you think it'd be fair to say, sending a message to LAFCO that the city of Galt feels that there could be an impact on our residents if development was allowed in the floodplain?
Sure.
Okay. So, you'd be comfortable if we sent that message?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more comments?
Nope.
Councilman Roboy?
Nobody has mentioned tonight, the aquifer that is the water supply for the city of Galt and other cities in this area. This expansion, this massive expansion of Elk Grove could one day affect the water supply for the city of Galt. So, that needs to be studied, and that really should be talked about in our response to LAFCO. Because to let Elk Grove continue to grow and then affect our water supply for 25,000 residents is disgraceful. It should never happen. So, that should be addressed. This is a copy of the map for the Consumnis River Preserve. All the green is the preserve. Obviously, this is a jewel in the state of California that we live next to this preserve. Elk Grove wants to build with this proposal right up, right up to the preserve. That's their goal. So, I agree with the speaker from Wilton, and I agree with the county, Elk Grove should not in any way enter the floodplain in any of their proposals. In Galt's general plan, we have, we have not entered the floodplain in any of our proposals. We pulled back from the flood, floodplain. On the green here, where the county is saying Elk Grove should stop, I think that only depends on how it affects the habitat conservation plan. If this proposal in any way affects the habitat conservation plan, then it shouldn't be allowed. So, I think that needs to be addressed in our, in our response. Because according to the county...
I was going to ask one question. Sandy, and I wasn't able to get a hold of Shutton today because of their meetings, but have you had any communications from them in the last few months? I heard through a third party, they may have made some additional progress, but do you know if that's true?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
So, according to the county, this affects the habitat conservation plan, so that obviously needs to be addressed. So, in my opinion, at a minimum, we need to address the water issue, the habitat conservation plan, how they're going to mitigate for all this development. And obviously, Elk Grove has the right to grow, but if they're going to grow, and if they truly believe in a green belt, this piece right here, Essinger Road, they shouldn't be developing that, because their proposal all along was that we believe a green belt between Galt and Elk Grove along the 99 corridor. So, they should not be asking for this whole piece right here, anything south and east of Essinger Road. If we use the concept that they really believe in a green belt along 99. So, I'm hoping we address that issue in our response.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
I'm not going to repeat anything that has already been said, but I do agree with the Wilton Action Group and their concerns about developing in the floodplain, as Councilmember Claire and Councilmember Roboy have both clearly stated. I, I do also want to send the message to LAFCO that the city of Galt needs to know land use designations, because I really think, you know, if, if the majority of that land that they're looking at expanding into is developed as residential, I think the traffic on 99 would be substantial and potentially catastrophic. It could be mitigated by, you know, mixed use scenarios, but since we don't know what the land use designations are by looking at this map, it'd be hard for us to comment on it. So, I think we should ask for more information from the city of Elk Grove through LAFCO on what the land use designations are proposed to be, and the timeframe that they're proposing to do it in.
I will say, their application in answering all of the LAFCO questions that you're required to answer, they basically indicate no specific land use designations or prezonings are proposed or required at this point. No prezoning is associated with the proposed SOI amendment. It's more appropriate at the time annexation occurs.
And I would think, from our standpoint, as representatives of the city of Galt, we could never support an expansion that we don't know what it will entail.
And that's one of the county's comments as well.
Land use designations and such. But I, I do also want to make the comment that Mayor Gary Davis has been very open to discussions about the green belts. And if the community activist group from the city of Elk Grove is willing to put together a meeting with Vice Mayor Haynes, myself, Vice Mayor Pat Hume, and Mayor Gary Davis, I'd be willing to do it. But I really think that we need to enter into a permanent green belt agreement before the city of Elk Grove continues to expand. So, do you have enough comments to take back to LAFCO?
I think so. We will probably draft something and then do a pass-through and, and request comments.
Okay. Could we, just real brief?
Yeah, I will. I just want to make one comment that I wasn't thinking of, but when Tim made the, Councilman Roboy made the comment about the water issue. The dilution credits right now that we are, that the city of Galt is entitled to through this, the state, and I understand it, that, that helped us to save some money with our wastewater treatment plant. If we decrease the water flow down the Consumnis River, I'm concerned that that, further development further north could actually hurt our dilution credits, too, with our wastewater treatment plant. So, that's something to consider as well, not just drinking water, but also water for other purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. And, did you have a comment, Darrell?
Yeah, I was going to say, can we put in the, the letter we send, actually, that, it's not LAFCO's job, but it's a good place to put it, just put that, "City of Galt continues to request to deal with these current and future issues, that a green belt agreement be reached," something like that?
We look forward to ongoing discussions.
How about they just mandate it in their approval? Then we don't have to worry about it anymore.
Everyone that came tonight from the town of Wilton and the city of Elk Grove, thank you for coming and giving us your perspective. It's kind of hard for us to provide comments on something that's so vague as this five, this five-slide presentation was. So, thank you for giving us your perspective. Okay, that takes us to regular calendar item number three. That is the Galt Market Fee Adjustments and Enhancements. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Boyce Jeffries.
Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, and good evening. At this time, as our mondo salis is setting up for the PowerPoint, I'll turn over the mic to him for the presentation to council on the fee adjustments and enhancements. But just to give you a little background, if you recall during the budget process, staff was directed to look at the market on fee adjustments and enhancements, and also at the same time, Councilmember Tim Roboy and Vice Mayor Don Haynes were selected from council to meet with staff and also the vendors. We did, a few months ago, meet with the vendors on Tuesday market and also Wednesday market. But at that time before, and I know there's a lot of vendors here this evening, I'm sure that want to speak, Don and Tim are very familiar with the whole process, but this time, I recommend that our mondo salis present the PowerPoint and the recommendations this evening to council.
Just hanging, waiting a second for our point. Thank you, council. I'm going to go through a presentation regarding our Galt market. During our budget process, we, Councilman Roboy and Don, Vice, excuse me, it's been a long day.
That's okay.
It's a Tuesday, it's been a long day. Vice Mayor Don Haynes were appointed to work with market staff to create enhancements and to adjust rents for the Galt market. Currently, we're down approximately 15% on Tuesday and probably about 5% to 6% on Wednesday. So what we did is we met with the vendors, our Tuesday and Wednesday vendors, and took a poll regarding some information from our Tuesday vendors, and this is the proposal that we've come up with. One, that we adjust our monthly rent on Tuesday from 40 to 35, our monthly corners from 45 to 43, and adjust the daily from 45 to 38. We have approximately 19 10-by-20 spaces, we would adjust those 27 to 30. Under that rate structure, if we could meet a 90 percentile, fill in the market over the year, we would make 1.5 million under those rates. Secondly, we would adjust our monthly rate on Wednesday from 27 to 30. Keep in mind that the $3 increase would, monies from that would go to additional advertising. We would adjust our monthly Wednesday corners from 30 to 38, and adjust our daily rent from 30 to 38. The 19 spots that are 10-by-20, they'd go from 22 to 25. And our garage sale area, which has been a success, we've sold out almost every week, we would adjust from 15 to $20. By doing that, hoping to stay in that 90 percentile year-round, our estimated revenue would be 2.882. Third, we would implement a wholesale retail area on Tuesday and Wednesday on A and B Row, which is located, currently, we're produces on Wednesday. One of the things we would have to do is relocate our produce vendors on Wednesday to accomplish this. But in a survey that, in speaking with our wholesalers on Tuesday, they expressed interest in staying both days and creating a wholesale retail day for Tuesday and Wednesday, just not our Tuesday market. Two, we would, if we did not meet our 90 percentile projection for the year, we would ask that we phase in a garage sale area on Tuesday within two months if those numbers do not improve. It's not something that we want to do, but we would feel that we would need to do if we're not meeting our 90% goal. And we would put that on the north end of I and J Row, should we decide to implement it. We would relocate produce, as I talked before, on Tuesday and Wednesday to G and H. That would be our cornerstone of our market, it'd be located right in the middle, it would separate our wholesale retail from our junk row. We would display some vendors, and incentive for these displays, monthly vendors would be two weeks free with the purchase of a full month's rent. If Tuesday Junk Row is implemented and the Wednesday Junk Row, then the Wednesday Junk Row would move to I and J Row. There will be no incentives for these monthly garage sale vendors, they're already getting a reduced price. So it would basically look like this on both days, should we implement the Junk Row on Tuesday night, on Tuesday during the market. In an effort to do this, we're trying to make both days more user-friendly, regardless of which day you're coming, you can get the product that you're looking for. You can get produce on Tuesday or Wednesday, wholesale merchandise, you can possibly get junk if we implement that on Tuesday. Some of our vendors wanted us to adjust our hours. Currently, we're open from 6:00 to 2:00. Some wanted to stay later, some wanted to stay to 4:00, 5:00, some wanted to leave it at 2:00 o'clock. We had a show of hands during our meetings, and the happy medium was 3:30. We all agreed that we needed to move up our start time to 7:00 a.m. And by having a 3:30 finish time, it would allow some of the residents that are picking up their children from school to still come by the market after they've picked them up. We would adjust our first-time vendor rate on Tuesday and Wednesday to $20. Currently, it's $25 on Tuesday and 20 on Wednesday, so we would just make one flat first-time vendor fee of $20. And that is the presentation. I would like to turn it back to council for any comments.
I want to say, this is the second meeting that Councilman Roboy and I have had with these vendors in the last year and a half, and the meetings we had, we had two meetings two different days, and it was an excellent turnout that we had gotten. From the first meeting we'd had, and we had well over 70 people the first day, and probably 50 or 60 people the second day, with a lot of input and a lot of concerns, and it was interesting to hear. And I know you didn't mention our mondo, but the market has been shifting and changing over the years. And part of the goal was, as he'd already mentioned in part, was that we're trying to adjust both days so that they're fair on both ways, because there was concerns about it being, you know, one day retailers were paying more than those on Wednesday. And I think we were trying to balance that out and make it fair for both days, correct me if I'm wrong. That's part of the reason-
Yes, you are correct. We were trying to make them more comparable.
Comparable, so that way, so the somebody would have as much incentive to be there both days. So if they're, you know, by cutting the rates on Tuesday, they're more inclined to want to stay on Wednesday as well. So that's part of the incentive that we're hoping we're creating. And I think this is excellent, and we've taken a hit on this as a city, and we've invested in this market, and I think we need to continue to invest. And this is one of the ways that we're trying to help it be more successful. And I know even in these hard times, that, you know, nothing's easy when it comes to generating more revenue, but this market is really very important to this community, and we need to continue to do everything we can to keep it generating funds, because it's very vital to us. I'm very happy with the results that we came out with. There were some other options, and we went over, what, four different options with this? I think ultimately, if not more.
It seemed like-
Yeah, and it seemed like, and there was a lot of input, so I don't know if we're going to make everybody happy, that's, you know, the vendors from the mark, but I think overall, I think they're going to be content with this, and I think it's fair, and I think that, I think that as time goes on, we're going to, hopefully, what we're going to see is some improvement as a result of these efforts.
Maybe we could start some speaker sheets, Don?
I'm sorry?
Speaker sheets?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in charge.
Okay, I'm sorry. It slipped away. All right, if we could hear some, anybody out there who wants to speak on this issue?
I have a couple speaker sheets. William Pack.
And can I just make a comment that I'd like to thank my, thank the vendors that have been here, you know, probably from 3:00 in the morning on their drive here to stay past 9:30 to speak on this issue? We really appreciate them as a customer, and, you know, they've put in a hard day's work, and I appreciate the fact that they stayed to talk about this issue.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, I have to say that I'm sorry because of my pronunciation is not good. So please try and understand, okay? My name is William Pack. I've been vendor in Galt Market 22, 23 years. So I've been a long time free market seller. Also, I spend a lot of the time in the market also, especially the number three, the two, relocation producer. I'm the Tuesday wholesaler, so I'm only to mention about the Tuesday wholesaler. So I've been 23 years in the G 51 to, 45 to 51 Row, green color, yes. So according to the last month's newsletter, we supposed to move to the A or the B Rows, whoever the G and H Row Tuesday seller supposed to move to the A to B Row. Is you right? According to newsletter?
Yes, all G and H Row, all reserve vendors would be, we would move you to a location other than G and H Row.
Okay, so, so first thing is, if we move from G to the A or B, this a lot of the confusion for the business, because just like I told, 22 years I've been the same spot, so a lot of my customers, they knew already, so they automatically walk through my space, same thing to all the vendors down there, I think they got the same situation with me. So if we move, even the city announcement later, but they used to come same place, confused. For example, just like winter time, raining windy, we blocked with tent for prevent. We got there, but my customer, they passing, because we blocked the tent, they couldn't see my face. That's why even they come my spot, they passing, then next week, they say, "Why you didn't come?" "Hey, we camp." "I didn't see." "Yes, we covered the whole tent, that's why." Even same spot, we stay, they don't see my face, they passed away, okay? They passed. So if city, the announcement, whatever they do, if we move, a lot of confused, a lot, because these times, our business, even the United States business is slow. Supposed the city and vendor supposed to come together, join together, helping together. This is, I feel like we got hard time from the city, I don't know. Before this decision make, supposed to have to survey with vendor, discuss vendor, collect opinion each vendor, supposed to do, and then finally discuss every vendor, like then, supposed to have to decide, not one, two people sitting in the desk and then find the decision. This very big damage to the vendors. So let me ask one thing, okay, please? How many vendor come here? Would you write hand, please? Okay. Anybody, anybody like move? Just like that? More people didn't come because they got house too far from here, just like I came from the San Jose. I have to, tonight, drive back my home, about two hours of drive truck. That's why many people from the Stockton, Sacramento, San Jose vendor came, they couldn't stay tonight, that's why they leave already. So more and more vendor, they don't like, nobody want to move, because they're not going to lose business, they're not going to lose the customer, that's why. So please consider this mention, okay? Thank you very much.
Excuse me, don't, uh- What do you think about closing? Do you want to close at 2:00 or 3:30?
To my opinion is, now, okay, now, we don't have to change hours, because any regulation, to my opinion, too much change, this difficult, both side, yeah. So if possible, don't change, okay? If change too many times, regulation, time, whatever, this confused, that doesn't help at all, yeah. Yeah, so if possible, keep the regulation, keep the time, if, but all the way, all the way we think about it. First, my opinion is, if possible, city councilor, what the city manager, whoever, discuss, contact vendor, what is the problem? What is the good point for the city? What is the good point for the market? Have to collect opinion, okay? Especially long-term seller, okay? Not one year, not six months, not three months, long-term, at least five years, 10 years, long-term, stay, especially anchor seller, discuss what is the problem? How help the city? Can, if help city, city help to vendor, vendor stay? Yeah. That's true. If vendor stay, Galt Market never lose the space, now it's 20% lose, more and more lose every day. So you have to find out, why, why? Why you lose the space, why you the good vendor, okay? So please discuss or find out.
How do you feel about the reduced rates?
Oh, that's, I couldn't mention, maybe the small vendor, they help to the small vendor, but to me, I'm the, I spend a lot of money, I got seven space, that meaning is, four days, I spend 1,200, five days, I spend 1,500 for the city, I pay the U. Yeah, I spend a lot of money, yeah. So to me, 1,200, 1,500, not much difference, but important thing is how city helping the vendor, okay? We have to grow together, okay? So city alone cannot grow up, vendor cannot alone grow up. We have to together join, just stick together, otherwise, we cannot survive, finally. That's my opinion, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker we have is Eric Sayea, Sayea Trading Incorporated.
Thank you for having me tonight to speak out regarding the space. Actually, my name's Eric Sayea. I got a space starting from this year, and I've been waiting for, to get a space for about a year, and my- And my concerns about new changes is, because, uh, just like that gentleman mentioned a while ago, you know, when customer get used to your space, when you're gonna change to another space, I afraid that we're gonna lose the business, uh, because nowadays, economy is not that good, and also the gas price, and you know, so on and so forth. And I believe that, um, cities should listen to vendor, because, you know, in order to city to make money, because we do pay city too, license fee and the rent of space, and if we not keep, if we cannot maintain our business, I mean, we're gonna lose, I mean, how, how city gonna gain on, on collecting tax and, and revenue? And what I'm saying is, um, I hope, I think ninety percent of the vendor will not agree to have the space change, they would like to stay the way it is right now. The main reason is because I, for, for example, like me, I've been waiting for a year to get that space. I mean, if, if we're gonna change the new space, I don't know, uh, can I maintain that, that kind of business, because nowadays, economy is pretty bad. And I, hopefully, we can keep the way it is, you know, because it's very hard to do business nowadays. And one thing I want to mention is, uh, we have a little problem on Monday, because we have space, we run business on Tuesday, but some of the vendor, they come on Monday to set up a space for Tuesday. And, and a lot of vendor do sell product on Monday night, which is will affect the business on Tuesday. And I believe city do have a policy that during Monday, Monday, when you go set up a space, you cannot do any, uh, uh, business on that day, because you, that day is required for you to reset up a space for Tuesday. And that will affect the Tuesday business, because they're not supposed to allow, uh, do any trading during Monday, that's what I, I believe in. And I hope that city can, uh, take a look at that issue also. Hopefully, we can stick with a policy, uh, that will support Tuesday business too.
When do you arrive? Do you come on Monday night?
Uh, I do come early, four o'clock on Tuesday morning to set up my space.
So, how do you know people are selling on Monday?
Well, we have a lot of, um, friend, you know, we've been talking to our friend, you know, as he tried to how's the business go, and we do, um, believe that, um, Monday trading is affect Tuesday business. And we would like to, um, maintain or gain our business during Tuesday in order to survive, because right now, as you know, everybody know, economy is pretty bad right now. And I would like to have some change.
Where, where do you live?
I live in Tracy, in Tracy. I mean, we, we came here this morning, late four o'clock in the morning, and then have to drive back home and then come back to meeting. I mean, it's, it's been a long day. I mean, I, I would like to help, um, issue resolve, you know, through my standpoint, to help, um, business and also to help all the vendor also.
Armando, can, can we look into that Monday? I've heard that before.
I, currently, on Monday, you are not allowed into the market grounds unless you are either the owner of record or a registered helper. No one else is allowed in the gate.
How do you, how do you?
We, we monitor, I have somebody at the gate, and if you are not a employee or the vendor of record, you are not allowed in the market grounds. If, if they go outside, off-site, I, there's nothing I can do, but the vehicle, the owner of record, um, is allowed in the market grounds.
Are you saying they take their merchandise outside the market grounds to sell?
They could.
Do we allow that off of the streets?
Well, if, I mean, technically, they're delivering merchandise. I mean, is it selling? I mean, it's, customers are not allowed into the market grounds on Monday night.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Johnny Zhang?
May, may I add one point that we did listen to the vendors, we did have vendor meetings, and a lot of the decisions that we made were based on listening to the vendors that were there at those two meetings. We, as Vice Mayor Haynes had said, we had many different options, and after talking to the vendors and listening to them, this is what we felt would work best for everyone. So, we did listen to the vendors. We listened to the vendors that were there, um, and that's how we base this proposal.
Armando, what are the total number of vendors we have out at the market?
About six hundred vendors between the two days.
I'm there here to speak up regarding the relocation project. By all the vendor here, all our answer is no, and I representing a majority of the vendor that's coming from the G, H row and A row. So, um, we do get a discussion on a meeting with Armando earlier, but, um, we still not understand, uh, this part. I don't recognize much come up regarding the relocation project. So, um, we just wanna say no to the relocation, that's it.
Could you, about how many people do you feel you're speaking for?
About ninety percent or more, and as I say, it's late at night, most of vendor that go for couldn't make it.
Okay, thank you.
Bo Jin Wong?
It's too late.
Okay. Kathleen Amos?
Good evening, I'm still Kathleen Amos, and I am actually here speaking as the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. We did unanimously approve these recommendations to the council based upon the understanding that this was a collaborative effort with the vendors and council members and staff. I realize that the, there are, there will be some problems with relocating, and I, I don't recall, Armando, maybe you could explain what the relocation, the reason for the change at the relocation to A and B and putting the produce on G and H? What, what was the reasoning behind that?
Currently, our A and B row on Tuesday is our wholesale area. Large majority of the vendors expressed interest of staying both days if they were able to stay, uh, in the same spot. G and H row, um, that would be the least amount of vendors we would displace by utilizing this row. It's centrally located, we wanted it as a foothold into the market where people would, would come in through all gates to go and get the produce on both days. That was the only way to accommodate produce on both days.
Oh, I see, okay. So, you're basically saying that you, you planned it this way because it would displace the least number of vendors?
Correct. We, we looked at all options, this was the area that we would displace the least amount of vendors that would, we felt and would help the market.
That, that was what I recalled, and the other, the other thing that we felt was that the commission felt lent itself in a positive way to help the economy and help the city, is, I don't, I don't like the name Junk Row, I think we could come up with something a little bit more, uh, positive than that, but I mean, basically, if we could get more people to bring their yard sales down to the market area where they'd have greater exposure on Tuesday and Thursday, it would reduce the number of, for sale signs all over poles around town, which I know is a constant problem, and, um, it would give people greater exposure from people walking through the market, and once the word got out that that was available, again, I think people would, might avail themselves of it, and, and it would help the city. So, that was our, I think that was our thought process, uh, and so, we did unanimously approve it, and I, I just want to give the council a chance to ask any questions of me on behalf of the commission, if you have any.
Did, did your committee hear, from what we're hearing tonight, did your committee hear from these people, they don't want to move?
Well, they're saying they don't want to move, but the, the rationale, but behind this configuration was that it displaced the least number of vendors, and no, we did not have any negative feedback at our meeting, there was no negative. And I think that was part of the reason that we unanimously approved it also, because there was no negative repercussions to our group at all. And so, we felt that perhaps it would, it might, was supported by the vendors. Um, and I do think that staff has tried to minimize the, the dislocation issues for, for certain groups, for, for the certain vendors that are here. I think the ones that are here are some of the ones that will be dislocated, or will be, have to be relocated. There might be a way to address that by either having someone stand there at the old location and, and refer people, or make signage of some kind.
This would not be implemented until September first, which would give them about two to three weeks to tell their customers where they would be moving to.
So, they're, they're, that's.
Two to three week window of, actually, if council was to approve this, and when they would be relocated.
Does, does staff now give out a map like you do in other places that shows every vendor and where they're located? Do we have that?
No, we do not.
Don't other flea markets do that? Where you, they hand you a map and it shows where everyone's located in the whole market?
Woody seems to say yes.
Is that something we could create?
They won't do that. We've tried that for years.
Armando?
Thank you.
But, no, bottom line, do we need to relocate anybody? Not really. We could have everything scattered out, you know, produce here, you know, wholesaler here, junk road here. What we're trying to do is design it, make it user-friendly, and have like a department store, where you go and you have your, uh, boy's clothing, girl's clothing, sporting goods, so on and so forth. One issue that did come up was, if you recall, one of the meetings, produce was very reluctant to move off A and B on Wednesdays, because they wanted the, the customer to be right there by the parking lot.
They could come and go, grab their stuff and not see the rest of the market.
Bingo, bingo. So, I mean, if we're really putting somebody out, it, it, it's the produce, and like I said, we're trying to design this, you know, to where we do have locations for specific items.
Could you guys design a map that would show the location of each vendor and what they sell on the little map? And you could hand it to every customer that walks in?
One of our biggest problems is the vendors changing of merchandise. They do not update that information with us. Um, the, we would have to update that map at least once a month.
Would there be anything wrong with that, though? I mean, at least, if we did this, we do this map, we give it to the people for the next three weeks, and at least people would know where they're moving and when, and then things change, we come out every quarter and come out with a new map.
It would just cost money to do, that's all.
I, I think that's the least we can do if we're going to be making these changes, so people would know where the vendors are.
Or, or something similar to a mall where you, when you enter a mall and you have the.
But, but the problem with that is you have to go to one spot to find it, so if you're on one side of the market, you gotta find that spot where they have that little kiosk. It's easier if you just hand everybody the map and.
What, at each entranceway?
Yeah.
Have a staff member.
No.
Yeah.
You could, you could do, just like you do here, you could put, uh.
Well, no, I want to actually hand it to people, because once you make the, we're making a lot of changes here. So, for the first few weeks, people need to know where people are moving and where they're gonna be, and we, we do it for every customer.
How many entryways do you have there at the market? Seven?
I'm not saying we do this forever, I'm saying we do this when we make these changes.
One of the reasons that we're doing this is to.
These two will volunteer to come handle it.
One, one of the reasons that we've designed this this way is that when somebody's looking for wholesale, we can send them to a certain spot, an area, uh, produce a certain area, junk a certain area. Uh, we plan on putting up signs, um, showing that this is produce row, this is wholesale row, this is junk row. We, we plan on, on purchasing signs and banners and putting them up if this does pass.
When we met with the vendors, none of the vendors in A and B wanted to move, none of the vendors in G and H want to move, the produce people don't want to move, nobody wants to move, we realized that. The problem is, the market is losing business, we're having more and more open spaces, we need to make some changes. We felt and, and the feedback we, we got was, move the produce people to the middle, that forces people that come for produce, like my wife always comes for produce, she has to walk to the center of the market, and then hopefully, people will be shopping as they leave the produce to buy, to, to visit other vendors. If we put produce on A and B and people just come for the produce, they're never gonna see the rest of the market, they're never gonna shop at the rest of, the rest of the vendors. That's why we chose the middle for produce. But we're not gonna be able to please everyone, so.
Maybe instead of junk row, could I suggest resale or, um, something to that effect?
I've, I've tried it all. I offend the junk, junk people, yeah.
You think junk just sums it up the best?
We will, garage sale area, we will.
Garage sale, yeah, secondhand or something, secondhand maybe, but I, I, I would support that idea, I would support the idea of giving people, people have, the vendors will have three weeks to tell people where they're gonna be relocated, so that could be worked out ahead of time. And then, I would support the idea of giving something in writing to, uh, people as they come in, so that they can find, go to the kind of items they're interested in. Anyway, thank you.
Well, you know, we knew this was a sensitive issue, we knew, and we had agonized over this on how to handle it and move forward, and the reason we did pick the, the method that we have here was, is like it's already been said, is to have the most minimum amount of effect on the fewest people possible, and at the same time, we wanted to increase circulation in the flea market so we could increase businesses for everybody, and this was the best way to do that. And, uh, you know, just like making the price adjustments, I mean, we're gonna have to take the good with the bad, and I know there's some objections out there, and I know not everybody wants to do it, but I think this is something that's, uh, I think you're gonna find over time, it's gonna benefit you as well as the others, because you are gonna get that circulation, hopefully, your business is going to increase. So, your revenue increases, then our revenue will begin to increase as well. So, I, I think this is a good plan. Jake, you wanted to?
I just want to make a couple comments. It is, you know, difficult, and we're trying to do what's best for the market. It has been declining as far as, uh, number of vendors and, and so forth. Um, one of the difficulties that we had in, in these meetings is, you know, it's easy to say, let's listen to the vendors, but which one do we listen to? Because they all have different opinions, there's no consensus among the vendors. You ask one, one thing, and you guess ten more, and they're, each of them are gonna have ten different answers. So, it's very difficult to have consensus among all the six hundred different vendors, so you try to do what you think is best for the majority of the vendors, which is what we've done. Secondly, I think the, the points that have been made as far as why we are recommending the relocations have been well made, but I think there's a couple other, other reasons that need to be mentioned that I think are just as important, because we're trying to fill up the spaces that are empty right now.
Right.
We have vendors, produce vendors, that would like to sell produce on Tuesday, but there's no room for them, because there are vendors in those spots, and we don't want to have produce spread all over the place. So, we have people that want to have spots, we just don't have the right places, so by reorganizing things, we open up spots now that those vendors can have a place to sell the produce. So, automatically, we increase the number of vendors out there. And the reverse is true, we have wholesale vendors on Tuesday that said, hey, if you give me the same spot on Wednesday, I will sell on Wednesday. We had the overwhelming majority of the wholesalers that said, I'd love to be able to sell on Wednesday, but not if you have to move me to another spot, and right now on Wednesday, you have produce people there. So, one of the reasons, main reasons why we move things around is so that we could get more people, more vendors at the market. We had wholesalers that said I'd sell on Wednesday, we had produce people that sell it, said we'd sell on Tuesday, so automatically, right away, we have a whole list of vendors that are willing to sell on those two days by simply rearranging these things, and we don't want to, we're trying to disrupt the existing vendors as much as possible, that's why Armando's doing the, the rearrangement that he did, but we feel as a whole, that this benefits the market more than any of the other recommendations that we talked about. That's it.
Do we have any more speakers, Liz?
Yes, I did. Abraham, okay, Abraham Friess?
My name is Ernest Robyn. I have a question, I have the signs for everybody of the vendors, produce vendors.
What do you say?
So, my boss, my partners.
Everybody sign.
It's petition.
And, and, and you see the, those papers sent in to us? You, you can look, what are they doing with the, with the papers? Everyone. Everyone, every single one. You guys can see it.
Can you, sir, can you state your name again? You aren't Abraham.
Yes, Robles, Robles, Robles.
Okay.
Can you speak up on the microphone?
My English is not too good, so, sorry, but I'm-
That's okay.
But, I want to explain you something. The Produce, nobody want to move. Maybe one or two, but that's the people that don't want to follow the rules, you know? Because everybody want to be together to help the flea market, you know? Right now, we are, that's like Armando say, he pay more money for us, for the Produce. You know, the Produce, that's the heavy garbage, so they cost money for the flea market. But, right now, we have two trucks to handle that Produce, the bad Produce. And we want to let you know, we want to help the flea market. But, how we can, want to help the moves, if you guys want to do moves, we are okay, but good moves. We don't like these moves, you know? Some people come and buy two, three boxes, that's only, this is not wholesalers, you know? This is one, the people have a party or something. Right now, we can send from here to the parking, one worker, that's only like two, three minutes and help to the people. Sometimes old people, sometimes women, you know? But, we can, we can send a worker from here, you know, like 20 minutes to right here. Some people parking right there, some people parking all the way to the park, you know? The Produce, we lose a lot of money. After we sell in the day, when we start the day, we lose money already sometimes, you know? The older kind of vendors, if they don't sell money, they don't lose money. They can sell in the stuff next week or next day. We have the stuff, you know the Produce how is it? If we don't sell today, we lost. You know, if that day, the rain, we don't sell, we have to throw away. So, I asking to look and, you know, our place and we don't want to move to. And you can see the signs, you can see the phone numbers, you can see the spaces numbers. And we want to be together with the flea market, but we want to be on good moves. Right now, I got my tickets here. Before, I have four spaces on Tuesday and five spaces on Wednesday. I paid $1,400 a month, more than my house. My house, I pay $900 and I use only for this. Okay? And this is another thing. I pay July tourney, my rent, you know, for the month of the week. I don't think I'm late and I pay late fee, $25. $25 for Tuesday and $25 for Wednesday, that's $50, one guy's thing right now, you know? And I don't think I'm late because I pay the month before, you know, tourney the other month, but the month before, you know? And that's another question, we pay late fee all the time.
What's the due date, Armando, for the rents?
The third full week of the month.
Is there a reason why we don't do it the last day of the month?
It was to help resell the spots.
Meaning, if somebody doesn't pay, then you resell to somebody else?
Just a week to resell the spot.
And has that made a difference?
Yes.
But, that's another question. The daily vendors, reserve on the day, don't reserve, you know, like today for the next day. You understand me? The daily vendors, if they want to sell them, they can sell and, you know, the really day is nobody pay, you know? Like, if I don't pay the tourney July, that's available for today. The daily vendors can set up on my place. The daily vendors come today, not last week, to reserve for today.
Do we have a system where EFT, where it can just pull it out of people's bank accounts?
Can you say that again?
EFT, kind of like our utility bills, where we'll automatically pull it out.
No, automatically.
Why is that? And can we start that?
I would defer that question to finance.
Because that way, if we did an automatic pull out of your bank account, we wouldn't ever be paying late fees.
Is the problem that you have to pay on the third week, would it, is it better if you wait for the last week of the month?
Right now, everybody's broke. We want, you know, like me, you know? Look, if I, if I need to pay $1,400 today, you know, and that's a two week of the month, I can, I can buy, you know, peaches, mangoes on something and sell it next week. And they save money, make me money, you know? Like, I make a profit to pay it.
Our problem with that is that when, if they, if rent is due the fourth week and they don't pay and they show up the first week not having to pay rent, not paying rent, we resell their spot, now they show up, oh, no, I'm here, I really wanted it.
Right.
That's where we have an issue now, we have to displace the person we had put in there for the day if we, if we resold their spot. And also, in our rules and regulations, we're addressing the two late fees. We ask that it only be one late fee assessed if you have spaces for both days.
Inez, you were gonna answer that question on EFT?
Well, at this point, it's voluntary, the actual customer would have to initiate the paperwork that says, yes, you can withdraw this amount from my account. And there are certain requirements that we have to advise them that this amount will be withdrawn from your account by a certain date. I guess that the market could initiate this as part of their rules and say that all amounts would be paid by EFT. I'm not sure if we could do that.
Well, I'm not saying mandate it, I'm saying offer it to people because it sounds like we don't even offer it. No, they can't do it right now. Because that would resolve this issue if it was automatically pulled out of your bank account on the exact day that it's due.
Do you all have bank accounts? Do y'all keep your money in a bank?
Yeah.
Or do you do cash?
Sometimes cash, sometimes, you know, depends how hard is the week, you know? But, what I'm saying, sometimes, we don't make money to pay them.
You don't have the money? Not in the bank, not-
No, and, you know, this is the thing, this is my life, this is my work. If I don't work, I don't eat, I don't nothing, so-
I know, I know a lot of you use cash because I deal with that in my job, but what I'm saying is, I'm just trying to give you an opportunity where you wouldn't have a late fee if you had it taken out of your bank account every month and you would never have to worry about that again.
Yeah.
I can address our ability to do that. Right now, we use our HTE financial software to do the utility automatic payments and it's set up, it's automated. So, it's, staff time-wise, it takes us about 15 minutes to run that process through. We still do have issues sometimes with return checks and that kind of thing, so there is some upkeep with it. So, I think that it would, there would definitely need to be some programming, maybe with the flea market software, I'm not sure, to automate that type of a process.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, you know, we want the moves, the good moves.
Right. When we, when we met with the vendors, most of the Produce vendors did not want us to add another Produce day, but the Produce vendors that weren't selling did want us to add another day. So, once again, the new vendors wanted to sell, but the old vendors don't want to add more competition.
This is, we, what I'm saying, we are together right now and we want to say, if you guys don't want it on Tuesday, the few vendors we have, we can stop come Tuesday. And nobody come Tuesday, just Wednesday, like everybody. Like I said, the Produce, the people don't buy two times. The people buy Tuesday, not buy Wednesday. So, if we sell in both days, we pay two rents, you know? We pay two workers, we pay two together and the people don't buy two times.
How do you know that?
It makes sense.
I don't-
Yeah.
We come, we come on Tuesday, few vendors, because the mostly buyers from Tuesday, that's a wholesalers buyers, come from another places. And the people buying my Produce come, local, local, local people. So, that's why, you know, people some just buy little bit. Like, people come from Reno, you know, Nevada is more higher on the Produce. A lot of people come from Nevada, they come from San Jose, Bay Area is too high too. We are the cheap area. So, that's why we selling few vendors doing so-so, you know? Because there's not the same customers on Wednesday.
But, if they're not the same customers, then that's good because you'll have customers that you normally come Tuesday, you'll have customers that come Wednesday for the two Produce days.
Yeah, but a little bit, what I'm saying, if the people know we come Tuesday, sometimes come Tuesday and buy today, but not come tomorrow, the local vendors.
Right.
You know, I see the local, the local customers say, oh, I'm happy to find Produce on Tuesday because sometimes I can come Wednesday. But, you know, when the people know this Tuesday and Wednesday, they pick one day, but just come one day.
Our goal-
We pay for two days, rent and workers and everything.
Our goal, if we pass this, is to use the increase from Wednesday to hopefully obtain some billboards on 99 so we can develop more business for the market.
I think the Produce is not, everybody know who, where is the flea market on the goal. This, you know, there's not, you drive on the 99, you know, and you don't have no money because the economy right now, doesn't matter where you put them under the signs, you don't stop. The people don't come because that's the economy. No, this is not, it's not a new flea market. You know, the TV and radio and newspaper is for a new business. That's a new business. And that's another thing, they want to charge a little bit more for the promotion. I care my customers, I want to make happy my customers. When they come buy me a box of mangoes, I give you one free and he come back. We are your customers. You understand me? You guys need to make, make us happy, you know? That's your business. You want to put in new vendors, put in promotion, it's like, if I have a restaurant, my business doesn't look too good and I want a new promotion and everything, I don't ask the customers for giving money to put in a promotion on the TV, that's my restaurant.
I agree, I agree. But, what we're trying to do is equalize the rents for both markets. So, this is the process of starting to equalize the rents for both days.
So, get this, we know what-
That's the goal.
If you see, we paid high before and right now. Right now, we pay 32.50, you pay full month and the third month of the week. Before, we pay more. We pay daily is 37.50.
Right.
So, that's a lot of money, it's still a lot of money right now.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you one last question before you go? All the paper with void written on it, and I don't know if it's for you, or what exactly is, why the word void? What's that?
You know, some, we are work people, we understand all these rules and that. The people don't want to move, you know, that's like you say, they always check.
Okay, so they, I always want to make sure, each of those who use the word void means they don't want this. Okay, now, I just want to make sure we're getting the message.
Waddell?
We always want to hear you.
We always do.
We're saving the best for last.
First of all, this is, you don't change vendors. We have about 50 stands, Arizona, New Mexico, Galt. We pulled out in December because of stuff like this and raising the rent and a bad attitude office. I'll get that out. And this lady back here in this parking wreck, I don't know where the hell she's been, but she's never been in a market, she's never sold anything, she knows nothing about it. If you want to learn about the market, go there and do it. 110 degrees, 100 degrees, you're there early in the morning, you're there late at night, you go to that office, you try to get in on two days a week, no, you got to change your location. I put up with it for 15 years. So, I said, to hell with you, I'll stay in one spot and I won't come the second day. That's the stuff you put up with from over there, not you, over on the other two. When you change this too, and you're gonna do wholesale? You know what's gonna happen? They're gonna come and get their wholesale, they're gonna leave.
Yeah.
You want the market mixed. I do the same thing at the Low Dice Shopping Center, which we own. I let some of these vendors come up and set up free on Sunday. When you do wholesale here, they get their stuff, they run. If you keep these wholesalers and retailers mixed, like Phoenix, Arizona, they go to wholesale or they'll go to the retailer or whatever, but they got to walk by each other. Follow me? Make sense? You don't, never split up a market of wholesale and retail, the junk don't matter and it don't matter what you call it. But, when they go back and forth here, they're going by the retailers, the wholesalers, because the wholesalers don't have everything that the retailers have. And you don't switch vendors around, that's one of the problems over there and that's why you lost vendors. I've been telling you guys for years, you keep switching the market around, changing the vendors, raising the rent, you're losing vendors. You first lost the picture man, which had a bunch of spaces, then you turn around and raise the rent again. And I said, if you raise the rent, I pull mine out and I'll take 20 with me. I did it. I know you took 20 with me in December. I got 10 more in January and we're all on Wilson Way. Because the rent is cheaper and the spots are bigger. And they have everything you got, junk, wholesale, retail, and the owners are sweet.
What would you do? Would you make any changes at all?
I would leave that damn market alone. Every time you do it, just like they brought in, oh, I'm gonna give you a ticket for running up to this street or this parking, how long did that last? Remember I brought you a pile of petitions? Traffic tickets? Charging 50 cents to get in? And one of the councilmen said, take those machines and get them out of here? I think of you.
Yeah, you're talking about the parking fees, that was a disaster, yeah.
Yeah. Remember that? We brought in them like that. I had customers from Sonora and everywhere and they said, what they're doing, they're playing a trick. The time we get back to our car, you first, you got to go to the meter to get the stupid little ticket, then take it back all the way to your car and if you're half a block down that driveway, put it on your windshield. But, they had somebody sitting down there writing a ticket real quick, watching you. So, they were writing tickets. That's how they got so many tickets. That guy would stand down there in his clothes, down the driveway because the vendors were watching him, he'd stand there, they'd pull in or they'd go to get their ticket and he'd nail them.
What about the reduction in the rental fees, is that-
Yeah, you're gonna raise the rent, you're gonna lose some more.
No, no, I said reduction. They reduce the fees.
I don't know, every time you do changes in that flea market, you're gonna lose money.
You've been reducing the fees?
Every time you do changes. What you should have done is listened a long time ago and not run all the good vendors off, the big wholesalers and some retail. And if you want to go way back seven years ago, you shouldn't have run off the widows, divorced ladies, they couldn't take, haul a tent in their car. So, that's why we left tents up all week. And all of a sudden, they come in, we're gonna have car shows, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that. It never happened, but you took the tents down, you got rid of all the big steel tables, they sold them for $3 apiece or something to the guy that puts up tents. That was city property, $3 apiece. And he's got them now and now he's stalling them back to the vendors or renting them. And when you did all of that, it kept going down and going down. I was watching it. Because the same thing happened in New Mexico on 43rd Street. You got to leave it alone and try to get the other vendors back, even if you do something with the rent. Because I let vendors come up to the shopping center and set up there, we had 30 of them last week.
What, they charge you at the shopping center?
I own it, I don't charge them nothing, me and my dad. We own 33 shopping centers in our family.
Any other comments?
No.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Gary Tuttle. Yeah, my name's Gary Tuttle, I live outside the city limits, but I have a business here in town. And some of the complaints that we have with having businesses here is, we want to know how you control the wholesaling and the retailing because people say there's- because people say they're wholesaling, but they don't check for a resale license. They sell things that retail, saying they're selling them at wholesale. And people go into the businesses local, one lady went into El Corral, said she bought a dress that she sells there at wholesale, but paid more than she would have bought it at El Corral. And I just wonder how you track that. Plus, I pay a whole lot more than $30 a day for rent. And nobody's paying for my advertising, nobody pays, stands out here and hands out flyers where my business is. And we'd just like to know, as a business, why they get special preferential treatment? And we don't-
I think to respond to you is, I don't think any of these vendors would tell you that they feel they get special treatment.
Well, you do advertising for them, you want to be sure that their customers know where they're at.
That, the flea market brings in over, how much, how much Armando, how much does it bring in for the city?
2.9 this last-
2.9 million dollars. So for you to say that we should not support the market with advertising, I completely disagree.
Well, I'd like you to support my business too.
I think we do support your business, that's why we're trying to fix up downtown, that's why we're trying to improve the area where your business is.
Yeah, well-
Do you disagree with that?
Well, I think you are, you say you are, but you know, we haven't seen any results down there yet. But it's just that these guys are complaining and you're bending over and backwards for them. And they're in competition with the businesses that are in town, so.
Ma'am, if you want to make any comments, please turn in a speaker sheet.
Not only do they, not only do they pay for the advertising with their space rent, but we set up a fee to charge them-
They're complaining about the rise of their increase.
We set up a fee to charge them for traffic control. So they were paying for traffic control on C Street.
Okay, I mean, I just want to know what you do to make sure that they're wholesaling and retailing that way. Because they're charging the same prices as the people downtown, and they're saying they're wholesaling. So, you know, that's just my comments.
While you're here, can you get your answer from-
Yeah, Armando.
I currently receive quarterly sales tax reports from the Board of Equalization. We assure that each vendor is reporting taxes to the state board. And if not, then they are either fined and written up. So they, and required to fix the non-reporting. And I do that-
In regards to the wholesaler versus retailer, how do we check to make sure that the vendors that are located in those areas or that are calling themselves wholesalers or retailers, how do we ensure that they're actually wholesalers or retailers?
I only have, I have less than 10 wholesalers at the market. That when they report zero, I believe that they report zero because they do not allow anyone without a, they do not allow anybody in their booth without a resale number. So those are the 10 that I look at that, you know, should not have any sales tax to report.
Armando, do you keep copies of the seller's permits?
We have their seller's permit number on file.
Okay, because if you have a copy of the seller's permit, or if you look at it, or contact the Board of Equalization, they'll tell you if they're retail or wholesale. Because they specifically, they have to have a license that specifically identifies that we, if they're selling at retail, it's got to be a retail seller's permit. If they're selling wholesale, then they have a wholesaler's seller's permit. It'll be on their permit.
We still verify. Once a quarter, we verify that they are reporting taxes whether-
Okay.
It's also up to the Board of Equalization to audit businesses that are claiming wholesale or retail. It's not the job of, Armando, to do that, it's the job of the Board of Equalization, their audit department.
I understand that.
I think that is a continuing-
Real quick, what is our current status on compliance on sales tax?
We have received 100% compliance with people that we've sent letters, whether it's they've quit and never come back, or they've gone to the Board of Equalization and taken care of the sales tax. I'm currently done with all four quarters for last year, and will be presenting it to council soon.
And by 100% do you mean?
Well, everybody that-
100% of the people who should have some reportable tax have paid some tax?
Yes.
Or we made no attempt to know how much?
We have a list of people that did not report any sales tax. We sent them a letter, we issued them a fine, and told them that they had to contact the Board of Equalization before we would allow them to sell.
Okay, but we don't attempt to determine how much they should have just-
No, we do not.
They did, they did some.
Yes.
Because I share your concerns, I have for some while, I know a lot of businesses in town have the same concerns. And I'll just say, I doubt any more than in our market, there's a lot of places we all can guess where all the taxes may or may not be getting paid. And as someone who's invested in renting a permanent piece of property, if you will, it's been an ongoing problem for our community, and as long as this market's here, and I got to say, I kind of lean in your direction, I understand where you're coming from. I think it's just been a, Barbara had a shop, so she knows too. I mean, I spent years in retail management before I do the type of work I do now. So I appreciate what you're saying and what it's like to have a brick and mortar type business and all the things you're dealing with.
I've done booths and stuff too, at home shows and things and, you know, small venues. $30 a day was cheap. I've paid $800 for a weekend. You know, I don't know why they complain at a $30 fee, but that's them. But I just was curious because, you know, on the wholesale, they say they're doing wholesale, and lady comes in and says she paid more for it at wholesale than she would have at retail in one of the businesses, so. And, you know, just wanted to know.
If there's issues, you can report that to the Board of Equalization, they can look into it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Tuttle, before you go too, I wanted to make a comment. You suggested that, you know, there should be some way that the city takes care of the businesses just like we do with the flea market vendors, and I agree with you. And I think when I first got on the council, I think Barbara kind of spearheaded this effort. We wanted to put the vendor signs out in the flea market with maps that led, you know, people that attended the flea market out to the local businesses. And I still think that that's the direction that the city should go. We need to use this flea market as a way to get people into the city and get them into the downtown district to shop. So I'm open to any suggestions, I know you guys are really active with what goes on in the community. There's any way that you think we can enhance the market to bring people into town and get them to shop in your part of town, you know, we're all ears, we really are. Because we're committed to you guys being successful too.
I know you guys are, I mean, it's just when I'm sitting here listening to things, I get a little emotional, so. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
I was just going to add one more comment, you can go sit down, Gary, you don't have to stand up there. But yeah, having had a shop, I know the frustrations that you're talking about. And I also know realistically, I'm just saying it's a fact of life, when I would go out to the market to buy things for my shop, offered my resale permit, they didn't even want to see it. You know, which I couldn't understand, because when I go to market in San Francisco, I have to show it. So I think we all know that the, there are things that go on out at the market that maybe is not as fair to the local merchants. And it was one of the things that I was concerned about from the very beginning. And we did make some good, strong efforts to be sure that the vendors at the flea market were reporting sales tax and were reporting it correctly. At one time, we had a very strong representative from the Board of Equalization that really, I think, kind of organized things in a much better shape than it was before. Unfortunately, she was moved someplace else. And I would just mention, because we have ears here that can maybe help, that what I'm hearing from Armando is recently, more than recently, we're not getting much in the way of checking from the Board of Equalization as to what's going on as compared to what was originally.
It's up to Armando to contact the Sacramento District Office, they handle the audits for this city.
And can I say that they are proactive when we give them a list? In the past, they were very proactive, and I'm sure due to budget restraints like the other departments, they've stopped coming out here, the workloads have increased. And we've switched case managers three times in the last two years.
Well, at 6:55 an hour, you're going to get the best money you can buy.
Well, I think everyone just wants to be treated fairly.
Okay, Walt Ballard?
Mr. Mayor, while the next speaker's coming up, I just wanted to remind you of the 11 o'clock rule.
Thank you.
My name's Walt Ballard, I'm resident of Galt. My wife owns the Nut Hut, we sell basically dead center of the middle of the market. And my main concern basically is, to me, we're not, we asked, basically the first meeting that we were at, I went to both meetings, most of the vendors asked for a decrease because, you know, the rent has been so high, it's, I mean, you're in like the top one, two in markets. But it looks to me like this is going to be an increase. In between Tuesday and Wednesday and the prices, they're just taking off of Tuesday and adding it on to Wednesday. But anyway, one of my big concerns is putting produce in the middle. We're going to be right there. And just produce, if everyone knows, has a tendency to draw flies. And we sell food and you're putting it right in the middle of food row. There's two eating areas. Right here and right here. There's a vendor here, we're here, there's one here, there's another one here, there's one here and there's two more here. And we've noticed, because of the hot weather, on Wednesday, we have more of a, even on A and B, we still have more flies. And it's really concerning to me, people sitting there getting food and sitting down, eating, and have to deal with the flies. I mean, regards to, you know, everyone that sells produce, it's not their fault. You know, it just, it happens. And we have, we have packaged food, which is not really a bother there, but we do also have a sample system with shaking jars. And, you know, we don't have to, want to have to deal with it. So, and that's the, I'm just hoping and praying that, you know, our business has been there for 19 years, and this is not going to be the nail in the coffin.
So you don't want them to change?
I don't want them to move, no, because we have, I mean, ideal spot, I mean, I have people that come from Santa Cruz, Fresno, they don't do it every week. But if we move and they show up and they can't find us, they're leaving.
Do you think a map of the market would help?
You know, I've seen this happen before, companies, I mean, businesses that have relocated, have moved for some reason from a shopping mall or something like that, their sales drop. I mean, right now, we're down 15 or 50% on sales from the last couple of years. The market's been going downhill. And it's gotten to the point now, we're just, it's like week to week to make the rent. Because, I mean, we're paying basically, we pay more than the $30 a day. And it's really, I mean, when you're paying 960 bucks for 10 days, you know, he doesn't take that into consideration, and he's not out there in 110 degrees like it was a few weeks ago, or out there in the wind and stuff, he's in an air-conditioned place, which is his choice and what he's paying for. And this is our choice to be there. And we have a lot of fun doing it, but I hate to see something that's really good fall apart. And I think this increase is going to be the last nail in the coffin. I know on Tuesday, when the 30 goes to 38, there's six vendors, if it happens, they're gone.
Do you come both days?
Yeah.
Would you come both days?
Yeah, living here in Galt, it's easy for us, we come down Monday night, we set up. So we don't have the travel time. But I mean, I still have to travel to get our supplies. But it's just, you know, it's like a family. And I think everybody in here agree, we're like a family. You know, it's like a circus in a way. You know, everybody's a family, no matter what you do, everybody talks. And it was going around, A and B, my understanding is, I mean, you can mark me wrong, there's basically two to three wholesalers that don't want to move. And they're changing the whole market for three people? You know, and what really concerns me is you're pretty putting produce right in the middle, right in the heart of food eligibility.
Well, we're doing that intentionally, we're trying to get people who only come for produce to shop at the rest of the market.
I understand that, but this has been an ongoing thing for what, 20 years? Produce has been there? So those people, no matter where you put produce, they're coming there for produce. Your Sunday farmer's market, I mean, right now, I'm not saying it even has anything, it's not even bothering the market, but later on, if it grows, like you guys want to put it downtown, or you guys want to make a really nice thing, which is great for the town, but it's also going to take away from the market. Because who buys on Sunday is not going to buy Tuesday or Wednesday? You know, and we have sell nuts and fruit, dried fruit, and there's vendors that are selling nuts and fruit there too. And we have seen have lost some customers because of it. You know, so, I mean, it's a cast 13 thing, I know you're never going to make anybody happy, I mean, everybody happy, some people are going to be okay, some people aren't.
Mr. Ballard?
I'm one of them, I'll agree with you. I mean-
Your five minutes are-
You know, we've been there for a long, long time.
Mr. Ballard, your five minutes are up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
So you're, a couple more questions. You're saying that Wednesday, the increase from 30 to 38 in the corner, are you only saying that's the only issue?
If you look at, I don't have the paper in front of me, but if you look at, the 45, they're knocking down the 43, I can't remember them all, the 30, they're taking up the 38 on Wednesday.
Wait, are you talking about Wednesday or Tuesday?
Okay, Tuesday on the 45-
I think they're putting it up there. It's coming.
One of the papers I have that they gave us out is reading a little different than what Armando had up there. The increase from 30 to 38 on the-
Which day are we talking about?
On regular spaces.
Wednesday?
Yeah, on Wednesday. But what you're deducting on Tuesday is the 45, you're dropping to 43. But if you add up the two days, and maybe I did it wrong.
We're trying to get people to go monthly and not daily.
But I understand what you're saying, you know, like I said, we're paying monthly right now because we're in food, we're basically paying for food space, which is the highest basis. And that's another thing on this proposal, the food space is not even mentioned on it. We're not getting an increase, a decrease, we're not getting anything, we're not even mentioned. And we pay, basically, for the single spaces that we are, we pay the highest. You know, I pay $48, I have, basically it's one space, but it's considered two when I pay. It's 48 and 48, so it's $96 a day.
And you sell Tuesday and Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
So-
On a five-day week, I pay 960 bucks, that's way over my house. And I get to live in my house seven days a week.
So you're saying the Wednesday increases you feel will cause a problem?
Well, the Wednesday increase is an increase, not a decrease.
It is an increase, yeah, no, I agree.
But if you take it all, the whole thing together, both days, you're getting an increase overall. Bottom line is an increase, not a decrease.
Well, I mean, if you're just doing monthly, it actually is a decrease, but if you compare monthly on Tuesday and Wednesday.
I mean, I can't tell you, there's like 820 spaces in the whole park.
Right.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have anyone else that would like to speak before we open it up?
Cliff Lofton, I live in Galt, I live about two blocks from the flea market.
That map right there, Cliff?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And when I go for my walks every day, and I walk through the flea market, I don't know how many of you other people walk through every Wednesday or Tuesday. And I didn't even notice till recently that they started selling produce on Tuesdays because all down this row here, there's produce now, where it used to be wholesale vendors probably 90% of it. I mean, I've been there when Wednesday mornings, there used to be cars lined up from this entrance all the way down here, all the way down here waiting to get in. all the way down here, all the way down here, waiting to get in. Now there's none. When I walk around there, the other day I counted them just for the heck of it, because I, I know what's going on here. There was like 150 to 200 empty spaces. There's a lot of empty spaces. Now I've seen a lot more of them on Tuesdays, too. But what I'm saying is, I, I don't have, either way, I just, and the flea market was on the other side of Galt, from my standpoint, because I live next to it. But I can see their point. It's like a blind person. They don't want you moving the furniture around in their house, because they gotta get up and move around. And it's the same thing with the people that come to the market. They know they can come in, the east side, west side over there, go in, get their produce, and leave. The other ones that wanna go in, and they got now, I think they got all garage sale, or what they call junk row, stuff now they wanna move here. But, I mean, I walk up and down all of them, because you never know what you're gonna find, because it's kind of scattered around. And I think that's the same way a lot of people are, or could be. I, I just can't see, from what they were talking about, I mean, I'm just sitting there listening and trying to make sense out of what people are saying. And the last man said, why are you gonna put the produce right down the middle when it's always been over here? And the same reason that he said, where the produce has its drawbacks, when it's, you know, the grapes and the bananas that they give out, and the slices they give out, of course, it's gonna draw flies and stuff. You know, I mean, it's not like, it's terrible, but I can see that these, these food vendors, right down this row, they've got the tents now, where they're skating, people sitting there, eating food and stuff, they're not gonna wanna produce row right down the center of that. I mean, just, just common sense. I mean, I'm just sitting back there, listening to everybody that's talking, and just trying to get a feel for it. And I walk through the place, and I live next to it, I know what's going on over there. But I mean, I wouldn't wanna, you know, I mean, I know where stuff is at, I can walk in if I don't wanna have to walk the whole thing. I know where the guy is that repairs the watches. I can walk over to his space, if I don't wanna have to walk the whole grounds. But if, if he's moved to another location, then I'm gonna have to go up or down every row until I find him. Same thing with produce. If you don't, if more people wanna sell produce on Wednesdays, I know you've got both rows, nothing over here. Add C into produce, put another row. Right now, in row C, you've got, what do they call it, garage sale people, or, or junk sales, or whatever it is. I mean, just, just add that, and move them over to another row. I mean, I cannot see moving them around. I mean, I'm just siding with them. That's just my personal feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. It's the last call for speaker sheets. If you wanna come up and talk, please bring forward a speaker sheet now. This is the last time we're gonna take them under this agenda item.
My name is Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. And I'm not a vendor at, at the market, but I am a customer of that market, and my wife and I go there weekly. And now looking at this map here where the produce people are currently at right now, moving them over here, the problem I see with that is, as a customer, is a safety issue. When we go there on Wednesdays, sometimes produce trucks are still unloading over here in this area. If this happens in this area over here, I could see trucks trying to maneuver their way out of here with your, with your customers walking through these areas and dodging these trucks. I shouldn't say trucks, but one or two trucks. That's a safety issue, as far as I'm concerned. The other issue is, we currently have the produce people right here, they tend to give away samples of oranges, cherries, all that kind of stuff. And people don't always use the garbage cans, so you're dodging produce that's been thrown away in, in this, in this area right here, on this walkway. I could really see this happening here, where they give out samples. And now you run the, the risk of somebody slipping, because they're walking through here, and here's all these samples that have been thrown away and disregarded. So I just want you to think about that. I know the change for these people isn't easy, and you probably knew you were gonna take a lot of hits for it. And I don't envy you guys for that, but just really look at this again before you make your final decision, and look at the safety issue that's tied with it.
Thank you. Armando? Before we get to our next speaker, we actually need to do our vote to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock. So do we have a motion? Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Come on, we need to finish this item, guys. We got a lot of people here. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Prove four to one.
Armando, can you address the safety issue, because we talked about that at our meetings?
The, we're opening later, so the vehicles will be out, hopefully by 7:00. We do escort them out. Whether they drop the peelings on A and B or G and H, it's still a safety issue. We have people that go up, up and down the aisles, cleaning them up. So we, we do try and do that.
We have one final speaker.
Wilson Moela?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Wilson Moela. I've been doing business in Galt Market like five years. And, you know, my big concern is about raising prices on Wednesday. You know, I've been talking with my friends, you know, who's selling over there, too, and, you know, it's, it's nothing about what we are doing bad or, or wrong. It's about the economy. And everybody knows it's, it's kind of bad right now. So why take care of it? Like, they did good on Tuesday, it's okay, you know, they, they lowered prices. And why you don't do the same thing on Wednesday? If you do that, believe me, I have friends over here, I can take two more spots on Wednesday. Get more. If you raise the price, I'm just, I'm gonna fit on this. I'm gonna fit. Don't worry. I'm gonna be here, okay? I'm selling the same thing. But if you lower the price, I've been talking with my friends, like I said, I can get two more, extend more, nice setup, and try it. I'm gonna try. Believe me, you're gonna fill everything row, all, all rows, you're gonna fill. That's the way I see it. And a lot of friends I've been talking, they say the same thing. And about, that's the first thing, you know? And then they, about the move spots, like Mr. Park, they say a long time over there. Everybody knows, and then it works, believe me. Five years is not a long time, but customers come back to me. Believe me, they just right here. Okay, thank you. I treat them very well, believe me. But they come back over here. If I move, one week, I didn't go, next week, they say, hey, I've been looking for you. Where you been? Believe me, it works. So I don't think it's gonna be a good move, what they planning to do. Like, five years ago, I saw the second-hand items. It was on K and L. It was a lot of people walking around. Because you can have products, everybody needs products, you know? And second-hand was over here. And a lot of people, believe me, they love and look for the second-hand items. So I think that, at that time, it was the best, you know, way to keep moving, to keep people moving around, because they come to products, but now also, partners want to see the second-hand items. At that time, it worked very well, I think. Too big, you know, things, products, and second-hand, we can move all of them. So that's the way I can say, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments by council, we'll start with Vice Mayor Haynes.
I think I pretty much voiced my opinion earlier, and I don't really think that I've changed. I, but what I do appreciate is the fact that these vendors have come out here and, and that they've stayed so late. I apologize, and sometimes this is how late these meetings will go. I feel that if we had done this flea market any other way, these individuals would not be here tonight, but somebody would be. I don't think it changes the fact that, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta made some tough decisions, and I, and I appreciate what everybody here has said, and there's, you know, some valid issues that were brought up. But at the same time, you know, we're talking about 600-plus vendors, and, you know, we're trying to keep everybody happy. It just is not an easy task. And, and I'm sorry if I, if I don't go in your favor tonight, it's, it's, I'm just thinking of what's best for the flea market and how, you know, I, I feel that it's going to benefit you as well as the rest. So I'm pretty much stand by what I was saying earlier, and I'll leave it for Barbara.
Before we go to Barbara, I have a, I think it's important if Armando gives his opinion on the future of the market, if we don't do any changes at all.
I have serious concerns if we leave the market in its present form. I think we have to change the way vendors sell on our wholesale market. The way they do business has changed, the way we need to do business. I think we need to make changes to help protect this market for the future. And I, I think we're taking a step with this. I, I agree with Vice Mayor Haynes that whether it's, if we had made other changes, that it would just be a different set of people here. I understand their concerns, but, but I think this is what's best for the market.
The only other point I wanted to make was when we met with the vendors on Tuesday and Wednesday, an overwhelming amount of vendors felt they were being targeted, and I said I would bring this up at the meeting, they felt they were being targeted by the police, both vendors and customers, for tickets. And I promised that I would bring that up at the meeting, and I hope that our, whether in the past or now, that we're not targeting vendors and customers, because you target people and you give them tickets, and you drive them right out of town. And I remember a lady wrote to us about a ticket she received, a customer, and she said she'd never come back to Galt again from a ticket she got. So I just hope that we're not targeting vendors and customers.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, I just wanna say first that I think that the staff and our council members, Ravoye and Dawn, have worked hard, and I think they've done a, a good job. I think they've done, in their minds, the best they can, they can do. And I know their intentions were in the best of interest. But I think, I think that the vendors are, have brought up some very good points, whether you're talking about this group of vendors or the ones that aren't here. Some of the points they brought up about the produce attracting flies around the, the food area, I think that was a very good, good point. And I think you also have to treat them as your customers. And these are the only ones that I've heard. I didn't, I wasn't at the meeting. But these seem like, they've been around for a while. They, they seem like they know the business, and I think we have, I have to listen to them. So I, I guess I would lean against changing with this new plan. I think I'd leave it as it is. I really did like the idea of having some kind of a, of a map or something. I think that would be very beneficial, even for the long term. I go out there and, you know, I, I get totally lost, because I, I don't know where the vendors are. I think that would be a very beneficial thing to do, is to come up with a map that we could hand out. But other than that, I'd say, these people know the business better than, than anybody, and we should listen to them. That's my comment.
Councilman Claire?
Yeah, we're short on absolutes tonight. There's a lot of subjective stuff to look at. The only thing we know for sure is absolute is the market is declining, and the O6 fund's a million and a half in deficit, and we've got issues to face. I, I wish I, I wish I had some better ideas as to what to do if we're not gonna do this proposal here. And I've already heard Armando say that, and I respect he feels, if we don't do something. But I've also heard all of you who are here tonight, and I haven't heard anyone other than you who supports this. And anyone who's ever heard me speak about much of anything knows I'm a pretty strong believer in free market and letting the market forces play, and you're, you're the market that spoke to us tonight about our market. So I'm gonna lean to that, that I, I'm not prepared to accept this change tonight. It doesn't mean that I'm not open to a different change, but I just, are, was there any vendor here? Any vendor out there wants this change, raise your hand. Did anybody? Nobody, okay. But I have other concerns, and they still have to be addressed. Like I said, that we're losing money. One of the concerns is, then, for staff or councils reference, the item we haven't even got to yet is the audit of the rec fund. And the only reason I reference that is, the audit says that we will raise our fees. That's how we're gonna deal with the 1.4, 1,496,085 deficit. The city expects to deal with the deficit in the culture fund using a combination of reducing expenditures and raising fees. So if we aren't gonna raise fees, then, I'm not sure what that means to this, but we, we're gonna be asked to accept an audit tonight that says we're gonna raise fees. So to whoever's the right person, is the net effect of the fee changes, because some are up or some are down, do we believe the net effect, it's subjective, because it depends how many spaces you rent, but do you believe the net effect is an increase in fees? Because it doesn't seem to be that's what it's saying. It's saying it's a decrease. Well, the word in the audit is fees, so you, you feel free to answer how you wanna answer.
You're on page 152.
Right. What's the estimated impact of the fee adjustments for the revenue, for the market?
Projected would be collection of 2.88, two.
Versus no change?
Well, last year we made 2.9, and I don't see us hitting that mark. So if, if we don't do something, I, I think it's, yeah. This was, this projection was at 90% full.
Let me ask to whomever in staff wants to try and touch this, and I know this is hard, because fees are one thing, revenue is another. When this audit was prepared, have we collectively changed what we thought we were gonna do when this audit was done? Maybe that's a better way to do it. When we made these statements, have we changed our views?
No, but I think there's a misconception about the raising fees. I think the raising fees was meant for the parks and recreation, not necessarily the market.
The rec fees. Okay, so the fees in this audit were for the fees we charge for recreational participation, not market fees. Okay, then that, that helps me deal with this statement.
But that statement is assuming that we're gonna raise fees in a time where the public's already paying a lot in rec fees.
Well, the statement is the statement, so if we don't think we're gonna stand by the statement, we better decide before we get to accepting the audit tonight. So, okay, let me move.
I think that when we originally presented the multi-year budget, we presented to council that there could be a deficit, or that there would be a deficit, and we had proposed that staff would come back with fee adjustments. That was all-inclusive. It could be the market, it could be registration fees for different sports programs. So we weren't including or excluding any specific revenue source or a fee. It was basically all-inclusive in the budgets. We basically threw in. We basically threw in a $300,000 amount that could be in the form of Galt market revenues or a sports program or park fee rentals or so forth. So it was, it basically was the entire culture recreation activity.
As far as the spaces, again, on the map, my experience with, say, trade shows is that there are certain places at a trade show that are coveted, and corners are typically coveted, and near the food concession, and, I mean, there's a variety of things. And a lot of trade shows give you priority if you don't break your participation. If you come back each year, you can grow in the deal, and whoever was saying he's been waiting five years or whatever sort of space. So in a trade show, over time, you might finally get a corner, but if you skip one year, you lose it. Someone else has that corner until they skip a year. So that's another reason I kind of respect some of the comments I heard, that, you know, there's probably that hierarchy going on also. If we do this, I definitely would hope we could at least start with signs, banners, something that said produce aisle, food aisle. I agree, we've got to get rid of junk, if that's going to be our term, but whatever that aisle is going to be called. If we are going to do it, banners, signs, I think would be a good idea. The garage sale, I also agree, making space available to people, you know, if they will come, so to speak, and if that generates revenues, I think there is interest in the community for that. Armando, do you have a feel of what you're calling junk row? Are there people who tend to come back over and over and over? Is that mostly a one-time?
No, we have professional garage sale vendors that rent on a monthly basis.
Okay. All right. Because I'm trying to get a feel also of how much benefit the people who live in our town are getting from that concept versus professional junk sale people, if that's what you're calling it.
Well, two, I know of two of our permanent garage sale vendors that rent monthly are residents of Galt.
Okay.
I mean, so they are getting a benefit.
I think that's related. I do want to thank both council members, Tim and Don. Obviously, you've put a lot of time in this. I know you were really trying to find some solutions. I just wish I had a better feeling from these folks that they feel your solutions are the right solution. So I probably won't be supporting what you're proposing, but I don't not support what you're trying to do. I'm just not convinced from the comments I've heard tonight, especially about the relocations, that that's the answer. As I said, having been in retail management for five years, I fully understand the concept of putting milk at the back of the grocery store, so people have to walk past everything else to get to it. Same way, if you've ever noticed, diapers are never at the front of the store. They're always at the back of the store. So I know what you're, what you're shooting for, so that's it.
Councilmember Raboy?
If we're not going to have council support, obviously, we need to come to an agreement of what we're going to do to improve the market. I don't want to shove this down people's throats. So I think if council's not going to agree with this, we need to come up with some other ideas for improving the market. And we went through a lot of proposals with staff, different things to do, but a lot of them are going to involve lowering fees if you want to bring in more vendors, and if you don't want to move anybody, a lot of the people at the market said they don't want any used, used goods next to them. Because it affects their sales of new goods, so.
One of the, and unfortunately, in the economy of our city as well as the general economy, that is unfortunate right now, one thing I'd mentioned previously, and I hope you guys remember, I said quite frankly, I think it's a little unfair of us to put as much pressure on you to figure out how to better market the market, because that is an expertise in and of itself, just like we've hired people to help us figure out how to market the city for economic development. At a time like now, I don't know that we can afford or that I'd propose we now hire a consultant to figure out to do it. But simple fact is, you folks are experts at running a market, and I think we probably, and no offense again to the councilmen, you guys have worked your butt off. I know what you're trying to do, but this is a complex issue, and I think we could have or maybe still could benefit from someone who knows how to market markets. Just like we brought in the people on the farmer's market, that gentleman knows how to do that. And this is a lot to try and, try and figure out how to make our market more attractive than the other markets all around us.
Are you suggesting looking at maybe a consultant?
Like I said, I don't see how we'd possibly afford it, so, no, I don't think I am saying that. But for a business that's doing, what'd you say, 2.8 million dollars a year?
Nine, 2.9 this last fiscal year.
A business doing that kind of revenue, it would not be, in the normal course of business, a bad idea to get a little professional help, but I don't know how we would fund it in our current state.
So if we're not going to move forward with these changes and we want to do something different, we're going to have to come up with some other ideas. At a minimum, though, I think we need to do the map, even if we make no changes, so the public can walk in and know where people are. And then I'd like, hopefully, finance can look into the whole EFT system of vendors possibly paying, most of my bills I pay, where it's automatically taken out of my bank account, so I don't have to worry about when the bills are coming, because they're automatically pulling out. And some vendors may like that, so it just automatically pays, they don't have to worry about late fees. So I'm hoping that we can at least look at that.
I just, I do want to, the comments that were made earlier, I do want to assure people, I've lived there 23 years in Galt, and I had, I do attend the market from time to time. I work on Tuesday and Wednesday normally, but I do sometimes attend. And most recently, we had a garage sale for the Galt Community Choir. We rented a space, and we got about $500 from things that we were getting rid of in our own homes to raise for that group. But I do have a suggestion. One of the things we're lacking in this report, and I think the council, would help the council maybe get a better feel, because I also have a concern about the negative response tonight, is that, we didn't get this at our commission meeting. If we had more concrete information about the numbers of vendors who would stay two days if they could, if these changes were made, versus the ones that would not, I mean, the ones that opposed versus the ones that favor. Right now, everybody's kind of in vagueness about that. So that's just a suggestion, if you don't change the locations tonight, but maybe, you know, make some of the changes tonight, but have staff do a little bit more of a breakdown, that might help. That's what I, all I want to suggest.
When we had the meeting with the vendors, we asked for a show of hands, and we asked just the same questions as you just prompted, and there was more hands that went up that would stay two days. Armando, correct me if I'm wrong, we had more hands go up that would stay two days versus not staying two days.
And, and we went out and spoke to the vendors on the wholesale row, and the majority voted or told us that they would stay the both days.
Each one of the issues that we're discussing here today, we got, we took a poll, a show of hands, and whether it be the time, or whether it be moving, or whatever the issue was, we did do a show of hands on each occasion, and we had a very good turnout. And we came to the, you know, it was reasonably enough that you could look at it and say, okay, this is what would fit best. I mean, we had to make the decisions because we knew we couldn't please everybody, but overall, I think the majority had ruled on any decisions we made. The majority of those that had gave us their input at least, that was the direction that we moved for.
But when you say numbers of vendors, I mean, out of 600 vendors, I mean, tonight, I'm guessing we have maybe 30 here?
We had, I don't know if you have 30 here, but you most certainly had 70 the first day, 50 to 60 the second day.
Okay.
And not all the same individuals, because one day you have, well, there were just different wholesalers, obviously, on Tuesday, and more retailers on Wednesday with, with not as many showing, but we still had a good showing between the two days. So it was a very good representation of the, of the market as a whole.
So it was broader than the group we have tonight?
Much, much, much broader.
Okay.
And not only that is that we had a lot of division on some of these issues, even with that group, and that's when we started doing the show of hands. And through the show of hands, we were able to get a little bit stronger feels to what was going to be accepted on an overall basis.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to try to make a suggestion to be helpful.
No, no, you're, no, I appreciate the fact that you asked the question.
May I just add that those were the biggest vendor meetings that we've ever had?
Yes.
They, it's the most attended, attended vendor meeting that we've had both days.
Do you have a feel why none of them are here?
Can I get a show of hands? Who was at those meetings when we were there? All right, so we got about five of you out there that was there when we were in the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so we have, we have a little bit different.
This morning, and I was there, they couldn't come tonight. They worked all night, all day.
Right. No, I understand. And the thing is, is that for those people who, who are comfortable with the changes, they're not going to come in, and they're not going to come and discuss it or support it one way or the other. So it makes it a little bit more difficult that way.
I had a couple more comments.
Okay.
So if we're not going to do these changes, at least look at the map, the EFT, let's look at the hours, possibly extending the hours so we can serve more citizens of Galt. Hopefully, parents picking up their kids after school, 2:30 will go over to the market if we have longer hours. And then some citizens have sent us these pictures. These are some of the vendor vehicles, and they're complaining about the look of these vehicles. So I was wondering, can staff, can we just help out the vendors and throw some paint on these vehicles? And I know vendors said they're happy at the Galt Market, but the residents are telling us that these vehicles are coming every week, and they're looking like this.
I have some, just before you answer that, I have some pictures of the same vehicles with the same markings on them that were taken a few months ago. So I think that's why some of the concerns came up.
We have vendors to show with brand-new white trailers and leave here with what you see there. We've, I've instructed my staff with the ordons that we put in the Galt Market, when they're on the market grounds, we offer a can of white spray paint to spray over it.
So we're, we give them that then?
Yes.
We give them the paint?
We will paint it if they're in the market grounds. I mean, it's not a professional paint job. It's a can of white paint.
It's got to look better than that.
Right. But the problem is, is the following week, it'll, it'll look the same.
Well, maybe we can offer them off the grounds too. I think that was it for me.
Okay. I agree with Councilmember Raboy in regards to focusing on extending the hours at this time and focusing on the electronic funds transfer. I think that's a great opportunity for our vendors to participate and not be charged the late fees. However, I also agree with Councilmember Claire in regards to the total direction that we'd be taking by approving this tonight. I think it's been demonstrated here by the amount of vendors that have showed up and have spoken in objection to this, that if council approved this tonight, we would be potentially creating a rift with our market vendors. And I think that at this point, the market is just too delicate for council to make a decision that could potentially cause a rift in the market and chase vendors away. So at this time, I don't support making any changes other than the ones that Councilmember Raboy had just previously mentioned.
So EFT hours and map?
And the map.
And it's?
Extending the hours of operation, you know, this is something we've talked about for a long time. Most Galt residents just aren't here during the hours of operation for the flea market. If we really want Galt residents to take ownership in the market, we have to extend the hours. You know, we're a bedroom community, a lot of people sleep here, work somewhere else. We've got to be able to cater to those people too.
Also, when you talk about the hours, Armando, too, you have the discretion to adjust those hours due to weather, correct? So you could close the market early if need be due to bad weather.
No, I have to leave it open, but I can allow people to leave earlier.
You can allow people to leave early?
Yeah. And one of the things that I had done in the hours, the 7 to 3:30, quite a few vendors expressed concerns about staying till 3:30. I said that we would escort out after 2 o'clock. They would be required to stay till at least 2 o'clock where we are now, then we would escort them out if, if it was slow enough.
Are you going to do anything with produce, allowing produce to move to open areas or all that's, I mean, do you want staff to come back with other ideas or just these three things and that's it?
No.
I'm hoping to hear other ideas, but we're going to have.
Other than moving, other than people being forced to move.
I think that's.
Look at some other alternatives, and let's go back.
Well, or another idea is maybe have a study session on, just on this issue.
We can do that.
I think it might be.
Probably a good idea. Such your best idea of the night, I think.
Would it be possible to try and have a study session on the end of a market day as early as possible to encourage our customers?
It's just, we, we, we kind of, we.
That's your best idea.
We kind of did, but the problem is, we did that. That's what the meetings were for, and you have so many different ideas coming forward. Jason was there.
No matter what you do, there's going to be the same number of vendors complaining about whatever it is we do, so.
But we can still, so there's nothing that, if that's what occurs, that occurs, but instead of having a meeting at 7 o'clock for these people, have it at 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock.
If I remember right, I think there was one letter that was actually part of our packet, where someone complained about not being able to attend the meetings because the time that they were held, so.
We had it right after the market closes.
I think what they had said in the letter was that they were still cleaning up.
He was discussing, he was talking about tonight's meeting at 7 o'clock.
Tonight?
He didn't understand that it was a council meeting where it was going to be. But, but the meetings that we did have with the vendors were, were after the market hours. And again, regardless of what time you've put it, you will have vendors that will complain it's too early, too late, not enough time, wrong location.
I have children, and, you know, I understand that.
I've.
Can we also, when we have it on our next city council meeting, have it at the front of the meeting, so these people can also get in and get out?
I second that.
And you too? Yeah, it's a little early.
One of their ideas to have staff survey the vendors and come back with the numbers. I mean, if you come back with 400, yes, as I would expand out of 600 versus, you know, 200. I mean, if you just had some statistical facts, that might help you make a decision.
We've done that in the past and brought recommendations and.
Right. So can I make a motion that we, staff develop a map for the current market, they extend the hours based on the recommendation in the proposal, we look into the EFT payment option, and are we going to do the meeting, or staff's going to come back with some proposals first? Some non-moving proposals?
Make any proposals first, then if we have a meeting, that's when we discuss it.
And then staff come back with some different proposals for council?
Can I also get a recommendation for more in the budget for the maps?
Well, it's just copies.
We had a big electronic sign, you could put the map on it.
Do we have a second to Councilmember Raboy's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, crew 5-0.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Boyce and Armando, and Councilmember Raboy, and Vice Mayor Haynes, for all the work that you guys did. Thank you.
Enjoy that applause.
Believe it or not, we actually have quite a few other items on the agenda tonight. Item number four, where's our consultant at? He's probably asleep in the back somewhere. There he is. Under Finance Department, the City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2007. This time, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Inez Kuria.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, staff recommends that council accept the following reports. The City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as the CAFER, for fiscal year ended June 30, 2007, the report to management, the single audit report, and the independent accounts report on applied, applying agreed-upon procedures. Copies of all the reports have been available in City Clerk's office. As way of background, just briefly, I would like to say that each year, the city does prepare and make available, as a matter of public record, the financial report of the city. It's basically our way of communicating the financial position and financial activities of the city. A couple of highlights I'd like to bring to your attention, and I'm not sure if you have your report in front of you, but in the CAFER, we did note that some of the projects that the city expended funds on over the current year are presented, and those projects were a result of the workshop that we had in conjunction with council, city manager, and department heads. And basically, we met to develop the mission statement, the vision statement, and three-year goals. So that is on page Roman numeral 3. Additionally, we note some economic factors, that the governmental fund revenues did decrease primarily in fees related to the capital acquisition funds related to building activity. Governmental expenditures in total decreased, excuse me, increased from 24.6 million to 25.8 million, primarily related to capital projects relating to roadway improvements, well improvements, the completion of Sheboyah Center, and consistent with prior years, public safety. Public safety actually had the largest net cost of $5.3 million in that fiscal year. Within the proprietary. Within the proprietary funds, there was an increase of 11.7%, increase in our revenues, primarily in sewer fund operations as a result of two fairly recent fees. One of them was a supplemental development fee and the wastewater treatment plant upgrade fee, both of them for public improvements and wastewater discharge and treatment. Our expenditures in the proprietary expenses or funds increased by 5.7%. Within the general fund, it actually ended up more sound than anticipated, just over $1 million more, primarily increases in revenues. Property taxes increased by 10.7% and sales tax increased by 9.3%. Our reserves were fully funded in the fiscal year presented. The Culture and Recreation Fund is in a deficit position, and we are addressing those as presented this evening by Councilmember Claire by the amount of debt that's owed for the rehabilitation of the Shaboya Center and also for support services, and also for support services to the general fund that council has been addressed, addressed in the current fiscal year. It is important to note that all the financial information presented tonight have already been included within the budget documents that council accepted just over a month and a half ago. So we will not be making any further adjustments to the budget. Those numbers have already been incorporated in what council approved. This year's CAFER is late. It's basically a result of our efforts to be in compliance with GASB 34, and it's basically Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's GASB number 34 relating to infrastructure. As required by GASB 34, the value of the city's infrastructure needed to be included within our financials. It was originally anticipated that we would be using a database program. Subsequently, we determined that the use of a consultant would be more beneficial to us. The process was a major undertaking for the city, and it took months to complete, hence the delay in presentation of the CAFER. Another report presented this evening is a report to management. Basically, the report comments on the city's accounting structure. It includes a required communications section, which is required, and it does address some opportunities that the city can improve on internal controls. There were four listed in total. And finally, the report also presents some uncorrected, an uncorrected misstatement of a prior year amount, which was not adjusted in the amount of $28. The Single Audit Report is also presented this evening, and it basically shows all of the activity of our federal award programs, and it comments on the compliance requirements. The city did comply in all material financial respects. However, it is noted that a weakness did occur because the report was not filed by the March 2008 deadline. Again, the reason for this was that in implementing GASB 34, the retroactive reporting of infrastructure, the city did hire a consultant to assist in the valuation of these assets. However, we were not able to obtain the report until several months later. Again, it resulted in the delay of our submission of the Single Audit Report, and we did not meet the March 31 filing deadline. There are no costs associated with accepting the reports this evening. I am joined this evening by both accounting managers, Michelle Neely and Donna Krug, and Mr. Greg Lucido from the firm of Ms. Siasini and O'Connell. So if you have any questions, we are here to address them this evening. And Greg, if you'd like to make a comment as well, you've been here for several hours, and if you'd like to hear from our auditor, he is here as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask him a question. I'd like to ask him a question, and I know you've done a lot of local government audits, but I would like you to state what you think the fiscal condition of Galt is compared to other entities that you've audited and whether or not we're on a sound financial basis.
I don't know if I feel comfortable in evaluating that off the cuff. It's been a little bit, I've not studied the financial position, nor do we give an opinion of on the financial condition. We would, however, disclose anything if there was a going concern issue. That's the only requirement that we would have, and that is not the issue. As far as, you know, when you think about reserves and things of that nature, I would say just in general, compared to a lot of local municipalities, the city is probably a little healthier than most, but I mean, your budget deficit, you're not facing what other cities are having and other counties are having. It's nowhere near that. But there's no going concern issues at least.
I know you were here in the beginning, there were some allegations about, you know, the fact that Galt's books aren't open for public inspection and money's hidden places. How would you rate the transparency of Galt's finances in regards to the, how the public can access them?
Yeah, the comprehensive annual financial report is available online, and it's also available, it's public record, and they're fully audited. And we provide an unqualified opinion to those financial statements, which by doing so, we are, we're not, we're saying we're not limited by any scope limitations. So in other words, we had access to everything we had, we wanted to have access to. So from a transparency perspective, our opinion basically would state that, you know, there's transparency there. There's nothing that we would add any awareness of the concerns.
Any other questions?
I have a few. And I'm not sure if they should be addressed to you or to Inez, but I'm looking at the Annual Financial Report, this particular book, as there are four books here. And on page three, it talks about this GASB Statement Number 34. And it says, "As a result of the retroactive reporting of infrastructure, the city has restated its beginning net assets. Net assets June 30, '06, as previously reported for government and business-type activities were 81 million and 37 million respectively, and restated net assets of 135 million and 102." Could you restate that in layman's terms?
I'd be happy...
Give me the, the explanation of this GASB...
I'd be happy to. In about 1999, or 1998, the Governmental County Standards Board issued Statement 34, which radically changed the way municipalities need to report their financial statements. The most significant change has to do with infrastructure. Now, in enterprise activities such as your water and sewer funds and things of that nature, you've always had to report infrastructure assets, the basis of accounting. But your governmental funds, such as, say, your general fund, RDA, things that actually produce infrastructure, were never required to report these things. It was expenditure of the fund, and as simple as that. So what GASB 34 said is, you know, now you have to disclose your infrastructure, and you have to, you have to account for it, and it gives a basis for maintaining it in the, in the future. Now, this was obviously a major...
By that, are you saying account for our infrastructure in what way? What we plan to do, what we've done?
No, the actual physical inventory of the assets and its index for its historical cost and replacement cost value. So basically, you have to evaluate your entire infrastructure. We're talking freeways, streets, roads, sidewalks.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a major undertaking, so you can see why, you know, it's not unreasonable that there's a, you know, the timing may have been off this year.
Previously, we didn't have to record the infrastructure because back then, it was the thought that the infrastructure only had value to the city. So there was really no purpose in presenting the value. Well, GASB 34 came along and said, "Well, we think that there is value there, so we want you to record it." So we picked it up as of 2002 and have continued that, but it was that retro portion from 1980 through 2002, that basically, we had to involve other departments and say, "Come on, let's figure out how much streets we have and miles, and what's the, the depth of that, of that roadway, and, and how many sewer lines do we have, and what about the manholes and different things?" So it was a major undertaking.
Does it depreciate?
It does.
Okay.
It does, and that, and that's what, that's what caused is the restatement, because you have this infrastructure from 1980 to 2002 that exists and is required to be on the books. However, it was not required till this fiscal year for the size of government Galt is, and then obviously, it all came onto the books. So it's technically a restatement, but it's all, it's not because of an error.
Okay.
Any other comments by council?
I have some more.
Oh, you do have some more?
If somebody else wants to keep us...
No, go ahead. Then I'll have mine. We wouldn't keep you this late and not ask you some questions.
Hey, it's worth it.
Right?
We'd be okay with it, council.
On page 10, Redevelopment Agency Funds Showed Increase in Fund Balance, However, a Fund Deficit Remains. What is that referring to? It's the last paragraph on page 10.
Okay, I can see it. In, in the Redevelopment Agency, we know that it lessened the fund balance, but however, we have a lot of loans that are out. We, there's a lot of advances from the Redevelopment Agency to the city for different waivers. So even though we started repaying some of those amounts, some of those loans, so the financial condition is better, it's still in a deficit because there are a lot of funds that we will be repaying, a lot of loans that we'll be repaying based upon future increment. As the increment comes in from the Redevelopment Agency, we'll be paying off debt for different projects, Industrial Park, I'm trying to think of some other projects that we have underway right now. So we'll be using future increment to pay off the existing loans to the city. So even though we're paying annual payments now, there still is debt, so it is in a deficit position.
Unreserved fund balance is still in a deficit position due to remaining outstanding advances from other funds?
Correct.
What's, what's the other funds?
That would be to the city. That would be to the city. So for instance, Industrial Park, we had impact fees, we had, I'm trying to think, let me look at, we have a schedule in here that actually shows our total amount of debt to the Redevelopment Agency.
And what happens with these, the offset of the, the advances, just to kind of help with an accounting thing, to present what you can talk about unreserved fund balance?
Right.
Well, GAAP requires that you reserve a fund balance for the portion of long-term assets you have outstanding, such as these notes. So that's why you see that the, a larger unreserved amount, or a deficit unreserved amount.
There's a total amount from the Redevelopment Agency to the city of, on page 48, and it shows the amount due from the Redevelopment Agency, and that's called the total advances from other funds. And some of the projects noted are the Galt Plaza, there are still amounts due there. We have the...
The Galt what?
Salt Plaza Shopping Center across from where it was originally constructed. The Storm Drain, Cardinal Glass, there's debt outstanding there, KMS Industrial Park, there's an amount still for the library project that was constructed years back. Greenwood Advance, Comfort Habitat for Humanity, the Boys and Girls Club loan, there's still some amounts outstanding. So that's the entire list of those amounts due from the Redevelopment Agency to other funds, basically the city.
Okay. It's another GASB 34 on the proprietary, proprietary fund, page 13. The largest increase occurred within depreciation and amortization increase of over 400% due to the depreciation expense related to the historical infrastructure. My, that 400% just leaps out at me.
Well, again, we...
Because it's such a long period of time.
Correct. We basically had to bring up all of our assets, and then we had to record the depreciation, so that's why you see a large amount in the first year.
So what, how will that look like a year from now or so? How is that gonna, it's not going to continue to be that huge amount, is it?
Well, the increase would not be 400%, but we would continue to see depreciation expense that could increase because you still have the assets there, and if we use a straight-line depreciation, then you're going to continue to see about the same amount of depreciation. You're going to have new assets that are brought on that you will be depreciating, and some that now become fully depreciated, so you no longer will have those. So, and we do present two-year side-by-side, so you can actually get a feel for what it would look like. But this is the most significant year when we had to do the retroactive amounts.
Okay, and report to management on page six, under infrastructure. As a result of this implementation, the city is required to monitor the condition and carrying value of these assets, and it must also develop an accounting policy for the improvement or replacement of infrastructure assets. Is that something that, that they're saying we have to develop a policy? Is that something we haven't done in the past? Is it something that's a new requirement?
Basically, with the implementation of GASB 34, it said that that was the year we had to bring all the assets online for the fiscal year '06, '07. Every year thereafter, we have to have a program in place to maintain that initial implementation, and now we have to continue to maintain that. So that's, yes, that is what they're stating that here. Going forward, we have to have a practice, a policy, software, something in place to continue to monitor our infrastructure.
And we don't have it yet. Is that something that's to be developed?
Yes, that's correct. It's in work in progress.
And the last thing in that book on page eight, the uncorrected misstatements, you want to just kind of explain what that's about?
The $28 had, the $28?
I don't know, I don't see $28 where you...
I'm sorry, you said page eight?
Mm-hmm, it's this.
Yes, okay. Basically, if city staff makes a correction, then basically, city staff made the correction. However, when the auditors make a correction, they're required to present that item to council's attention, to our attention.
So that's $28?
That's a $28.
When you look at that, it looks a lot more complicated than...
Yeah, it's kind of a, yeah, we have to quantify it based on the different opinion units. And the past adjustments are simply immaterial amounts that we noted that were error in financial statements that management declined to post because it's pretty much irrelevant. Yeah, exactly. If, if it was significant, we would require it to be posted, we'd qualify our opinion.
Okay. I have three questions in the Culture and Recreation Fund, page two. The Culture and Recreation Fund has not presented management's discussion and analysis, which accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, as determined is necessary to supplement, although not required to be part of this, to be part of the basic financial statements. Is that something that we should be doing?
You know, this is what happens, and this happens very, is very common, a lot of governments have these individual standalone reports that are also duplicated in their CAFER. The full analysis, the management, management discussed analysis for the CAFER includes all the analysis on the major funds, such as the Culture and Recreation Fund, and the duplication of effort to include this MDA in a, in a separate issued report takes a lot of staff time. And it's basically a choice made by management not to include it, basically to save money, because from our perspective, we qualify the opinion for that exception. The management discussion analysis are aside. It's not something that we audit. It was just additional analysis to help the reader, but it's, it would be duplicated because it'd be, it's in the CAFER already. So it's a big administrative effort, it's a choice.
So you don't see any need for it or benefit?
We always encourage it be done, but at the same time, it's not that significant. We just, that's why we just qualify opinions, it's a choice.
It wouldn't make a big impact on our financial...
No, it has no impact whatsoever.
The Culture and Recreation Fund is included in the CAFER, in the cities, and we did comment, it is a major fund. We do comment on it here, and it is included within the MDA of this report. However, because years ago, council did request that a separate audit be conducted of the Culture and Recreation Fund, the financial is shown a little bit more detail, but it's already incorporated in our financials, so we've just basically taken the position, it's the time and effort and cost that we would just go with what the information, because it is already incorporated within the other city funds.
On page seven, due from other governments. The Culture and Recreation Fund has an outstanding receivable balance of $88,000 related to reimbursable grant expenditures. What, what is that? It's on page seven? Under the topic Due From Other Governments, talks about an outstanding receivable balance of $88,000.
That was on the Shaboya Center?
Okay. And my last question. On page nine, that, that last, last paragraph, the Culture and Recreation Fund had a deficit fund balance of $1 million as of June 30. The city expects to fund the deficit in the fund, and I'm skipping through this. This is kind of, I guess this is what Daryl was referring to also.
We, we presented during the budget process that the fund needed, we needed to look at some fees within the fund just to avoid it from being in a deficit position, and two items are what primarily result in the fund having a deficit. One of them is in the amount due to Fund 12 for the reconstruction of Shaboya Center. So I believe that there was some analysis underway to evaluate the use of capital acquisition funds or Quimby funds for that reconstruction instead of using the Culture and Recreation Fund. So that was what was presented there. Additionally, council has taken separate actions so that some support services that the general fund provides will no longer be charged. So that was what we addressed in the second part of this paragraph. So we have been addressing some of the items that currently result in the deficit for the Culture and Recreation Fund.
So is that going to be coming back to the council with a proposal or something? Is that what you were saying?
Well, during the budget process, I believe the city manager in his transmitted letter, and he took specific action, and I think we took separate action under the cost allocation plan that we would no longer charge police services. We actually changed the methodology. So that did happen in the '07, '08 fiscal year. So when this happened as of June 30, '07, that had not occurred yet, so we had to present that comment here, but that was addressed in the '07, '08 fiscal year.
And keep in mind that these footnotes, as they were audited at the time, it's almost a year ago. a year ago. So, you know, economic condition, things have changed, but this is June 30, '07 report. And so obviously, things have changed since then, so, I mean, it's a different climate than when the statement was first issued.
Thank you, that's my list.
Great questions, thank you.
Councilmember Claire, you had a few questions?
Yeah, on that same page, and Barbara covered some of my other, but the last sentence, "The deficit fund balance will be addressed within the 2007, '08 fiscal year." And for the purpose of this audit, I understand that that's exactly what should be in this audit, for the purpose of the next audit, how will we follow up on this comment?
Well, we will evaluate the conditions as they are at the time. Obviously, I haven't seen the financial position of the fund yet because we haven't started the audit. And then at that time, then we'll discuss with management and should be to probably discuss with C manager, and of what the prudent steps will be to be attempted to take place. Now, obviously, these things here are not, I mean, these are not, it's not policy. These are just what, at the time, the current plan was gonna be.
Right.
At the end of the day, quite frankly, the fund deficit in the Culture and Rec Fund, most of it has to do with abatements, the outstanding monies that are due back to the city for administrative service, things like that. That's really what's creating the deficit at the most, for the most part. Obviously, a little bit upside down operations because of current conditions, but obviously, those are temporary in nature compared to the long-term nature of these abatements that have been on the books for quite a while.
Okay. If we can back up to electronically, page 147, and thank you for my electronic version of this.
Love it.
But I think it's, let me get there, and I don't have to say what I think it is. It is page four. The deficit, almost $1.5 million. When we do the next audit, and to the last comment, will it be the role of either our finance department or you, if we don't improve our situation, would that, how would that be addressed? Would it just say it didn't improve?
Yeah, what GAAP requires us to do is, or not us, requires management to do is disclose any deficit fund balances or net asset deficiencies, and disclose what the action steps or the plan would be to recover into a positive position. Now, obviously, it's subjective, and it's, it doesn't have to be specifics, not point by point. What we do is we evaluate the conditions, and if the responses are reasonable and seem that they are consistent with what, you know, the leadership would be willing to do, then, you know, it's good for the footnotes.
Okay. I think that's it. The one thing I, just because someone mentioned a moment ago, I think it would probably be in our best interest to find out from the Boys and Girls Club what their current status and near-term intentions are with the partnership that we formed with them. So however that can be best achieved.
Luis has had some contact. He gave me some information that he's received recently, which is not good news in regards to Boys and Girls Club, and I asked him about the outstanding agreement that we have in order for land purchase, and he said that we're gonna have to sit down and discuss it with him, but he said it looks like that they're in such deep financial trouble, they're not certain they can survive. I'll have him get some more information.
Yeah, I just think it would be in our best interest, the city's interest, to have some discussions with them, and I think they will tell us, you know, what their intentions are, and we can decide how to address it, but I'd rather not wait till we hear something in the newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here that late.
Have a nice evening.
And thank you. Always thank you to you guys for the work it takes to get these audits done, and Stacy and Patty as well.
Any comments, Tim?
No.
Do we have a motion?
A move that we accept the audits as presented.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, approved 5-0.
So you accepted both, four and five?
Yep. Audits.
At this time, seeing as though it's getting close to midnight, and Councilmember Roboy will be leaving here in the next half an hour, because he's traveling to Los Angeles, I'd like to recommendation, like to make a recommendation, look, I can't even talk, it's so late already. Like to make a recommendation that we roll the remainder of the calendar over to the next meeting, which I believe is on the 19th, with the exception of the Redevelopment Agency, which I think we can get through pretty quickly right now, and the closed session that we need to complete once we adjourn. Is that okay with the rest of the council?
Do we, this is for our attorney, do we need to complete the closed session today?
There's no requirement from my perspective. One of the items, the item that we're reporting on is in response to a council direction, and we wanted to provide information on that, or the council request before we proceeded ahead.
I think that one item that we were going to discuss, that's been pushed off anyways in light of a meeting that we've had today, so.
So we can delay that till next meeting then? Good.
So is that okay with the rest of the council?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject.
The alarm's gonna go off.
Can you turn the alarm off right outside?
There it went.
Never mind.
Call your people and tell it, it's us.
Do you want me to go put the code in? I have the code.
At least that'll turn it off. That's probably a first for Metro Cable. Yeah, to actually record us setting off our own alarm. I've done it in private, but we've never had the chance to record it.
Hey, it works.
It does work.
So we know the alarm system works, that's good. Well, at this time, we'll adjourn.
If I could, respect the request that the item for the subject of interchange, we can roll it forward to the next council meeting, but it is an element that's related to the design and the continuing progress, so I'd like to ask that we be put close to the front of the agenda so that we don't offer the chance of being pushed over again on what's gonna be on the next agenda. But if we do not get an answer, then we will be actually delaying the design of that project.
Okay. You make sure that that's on the beginning of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll adjourn and reconvene to the Redevelopment Agency. Liz, would you please connect the roll call?
Board members, Haines?
Here.
Haines?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Roboy, who's here? Meredith?
Here. Public comment? Information consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, approved 4-0. Do you want to do your city clerk's report, or?
I can certainly wait. I'm gonna give a report on the shredded event, but I'll wait until the next.
And all of the important dates that are usually given on the city clerk's report are all available online, so. At this time, we will adjourn with the remainder of the calendar being pushed onto the August 19 meeting.
Tim, you're not doing it very well.
Just goofing around out there? What?
It's because it's after midnight, and it's saying we aren't supposed to be here. I think that's why.
It's right.
I know, I was very reluctant, you know, but I didn't want to bring all those people back and go do that.
Oh, yeah, I agree. Or did you say?